Live, webinar is live, everything's
Live and unmuted and ready to go.
Doing it live. Calling the November 17th, 2021 meeting that Cohasse School Committee to order with all members present who's indicate so enroll. Call Mrs. Colerie.
Present.
Mr. Dial.
Present.
Mr. Kearney is not present. He is going to try to attend virtually, but his, his child is not feeling well. So he's home with his son, Mrs. Stenonge.
Present.
And I am present Craig McLeone. That means that we do have four members present, which, which establishes a quorum. And we will move forward with the meeting at the outset of the meeting. I just want to state a few things. First and foremost, this meeting is, and we have been holding meetings in this format in the recent past. It's being held in a hybrid, virtual and in-person format. So if you are participating virtually, feel free to participate anytime and raise any questions at any time using the Q and A feature through Zoom. And you can access the correct Zoom meeting by accessing the agenda and the link is right there. And I will also say that to that end, we do have a three comment per household maximum. So that's three comments, inquiries, assertions, exclamations, any form that it may come in. There's three of them per household and that's not to restrict anyone. It's just to try and mitigate the length of these meetings. So we hope everyone is able to express themselves within three comments and we will be keeping track of that as best as we can. And we have, I think, some, some students present to present today and we'll be hearing from them in a moment. Welcome to the middle school students that are present today. And, and also thank you to, to Mrs. Ryan and Mrs. Jewel for, for having them and hosting them with us here today. We also have some Eagle Scouts today that we'll be hearing from about their, about their projects that they're seeking approval for. So we're very excited to hear that, hear from them, excuse me. With that said, we will move right into public comment. And a public comment, as I usually say at every meeting, is, is the section of the agenda that's reserved for discussion points or comments that are not related to an item that's already on the agenda. If you have a comment or discussion point or question about anything that's already on the agenda, then please just reserve that comment until we reach that point in the agenda. But for now, if you have something that's, that you would like to say, it's not related to something that's already on the agenda, please do so utilizing either the Q and A feature on Zoom, or if you're in the room, please just simply raise your hand. And remember, if you have a comment, please state your full name and your address for the meeting minutes. So is anyone keeping track of that online? Okay, no virtual public comment and I don't see anyone raising their hand in person.
Person.
No. It's like Max Headroom. So we'll move on to the next agenda item, which is superintendent's report. And at this point, I'd turn the meeting over to our superintendent of schools, Dr. Patrick Sullivan.
Excellent. Thank you. It was a very exciting week. A lot of great sports action, which I'll, I'll get to. Doesn't cover it. But then I am also very excited to see our Eagle Scouts to be, I want to jinx them, right? But yeah, of course, our middle school students and teachers here. So very, it should be a really nice evening, exciting evening. So of course, you all have met Jake before. Jake is one of our seniors who's on our superintendent advisory committee. And so I will turn it over to Jake for an update from the student's perspective. So Jake.
Yeah, it's been, I can't believe it's been like two months since I've been here. I was like, how is it already dark? Like last night it was light up. What's going on? Um, no, it's been really been a few months, but it's been going really well. And this is just like something positive I've seen. Like at school, we've brought all the lunch tables back, at least for the seniors. And it was just really nice to have like actual school lunch again and like sitting with your friends. And it was like just a very nice experience to have that back just one step closer, you know? So something positive. But overall, it's just been really successful. I still feel like there's really great energy at this school, like especially from the senior class. And I think it's just been really successful so far.
That's, that's great. It's great to hear. And actually, we've recently been doing a lot of learning walks and we, we do feel it's, it's a nice energy in the school. So it's really a tribute to the kids and the teachers who are doing a great job through this tough time. So any questions for, for Jake in particular?
Mr. Dial, any question? I'm sorry, Mrs. Colerie. Losing track of my, my alphabet.
Um, thank you, Jake. It's good to see you. I too am a bit unnerved by the total darkness, but I'm wondering how you feel and whether any of the students have given you any feedback about masking, spacing, all of that maybe coming to an end?
Yeah. I mean, I know that everybody feels like it's definitely coming to an end at some point in the future. Like I feel like that's generally agreed upon. We just don't really know when. And I think, you know, like people are okay with it, but you know, definitely in terms of like compliance and like keeping your mask over your nose and stuff like that. It's like definitely people are just tired of it. Um, but I feel like once it does end, it'll be really refreshing. And it's that kind of thing where you don't realize what a big difference it is until you experience it. Like especially over the summer when things were a lot more normal, you don't realize how nice it is to just go into a store and like not wear a mask. And I feel like school will be the same thing, especially because it's such an extended period of time. Um, but I feel like having that like face-to-face connection with everybody again will be really nice and like seeing what my teachers' faces look like for real and you know? Um, but I think people are like really looking forward to it no matter when it comes.
Thank you.
Mr. Dial.
Yeah, Ms. Colerie stole my questions. So I was gonna do it when I was first, but you know. That's a good idea. But I do want to thank you for, just to reiterate, the insight into the student thinking is really important to this group so that we can calibrate what we're doing to help out our schools. So thank you for, for coming, even in the dark.
Ms. Stenonge.
I have lots of questions.
Okay.
Um, first of all, how's the feeling around senior world with college applications and waiting to hear back? Do you apply anywhere early? Are you going on a college track? No pressure?
No, I mean, I am. I'm doing applications right now. I think, you know, it's going well and especially because, you know, we're in the kind of grade where we had COVID all last year. So that's a big reason, that's a big factor in like who we are right now and why it might've been hard to do some things last year. And I feel like something we hear from guidance a lot is like COVID has really helped Cohasset students, as weird as that sounds. And you know, obviously it's not a helpful thing, but you know, there's ways that it has made this process like a little bit easier with a lot of schools being like test optional and things like that. So you know, in terms of like the COVID factor of applications, like with our grade, it's definitely been, been a little easier, I would say. Not that it's easy, but you know, it's like in the burden a little bit. But personally, I have deadlines. Most of mine are in like January now. So I'm like, do I really have to do this right now? Who knows? Is that like a December problem? But you know, in terms of like the management of it and everything, I feel good.
That's awesome. Another question I have is about the musical coming up. Is there on the second, third? Are you a part of that? Is that a big?
Mamma mia.
Yes. Yes.
I don't know the exact dates.
Are you, you're not in it?
No, I'm not.
Okay.
It's the first weekend in December.
Yeah.
I know that. And my sister is actually in it. And I think she's really enjoying it.
Awesome. Is it a large cast? A small cast? What are you looking forward to?
Um, I'm actually not entirely sure how many people are in it. I haven't been there. Um, I am like really looking forward to seeing my sister. Like the chorus teacher's been like, your sister has a lovely voice, like so many times. And I'm like, oh my gosh, like I've heard her sing like a couple of times. So I'm really excited to see her.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Awesome. Well, I can't wait to see her too.
Oh, me too.
Also, did you attend any of the recent sporting events? I went to one. I went to field hockey, first round of states. Did you catch any games? It's okay if you didn't, Jake.
No, no, no. I'm like the wrong person to ask for that.
That's fine. You don't need to be a sports guy.
I'll give some updates.
Yeah. I choose the trip you went. It's fun.
The third through the fifth is mamma mia.
Third through the fifth? Good. I'll be there.
Don't forget the Cohasset Middle School with the concept, which is also upcoming. And then we're, we're certainly gonna pursue that at the elementary level too, some plans.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Stenonge. Jake, thanks so much for your ever positive attitude that you always bring to the meetings. It's been lovely to see you. I don't have any particular questions, but thank you so much for being here and for your participation in the committee with Dr. Sullivan. Can we let Jake go?
You should. I'll just update him a couple of things because it might, might spark more questions.
Okay, let's do it.
So we, we are doing, continuing our work to gather student voice, which is totally appropriate for this particular presentation coming up for the middle school. But part of it is, is having our advisory committee create a survey that has gone out to middle school. I believe middle school has taken it, or they're, they're going to take it soon. Principal Mills, correct? The survey?
I had to, yes, sir.
Yesterday, okay. And we're basically asking questions around our four compass points. The high school will be taking it as well. And then we're going to gather that information and work with building leaders and district leaders to really make sure that student voice is tied into all of our plans as we move forward. So it's a nice compliment to what you're gonna hear tonight, which is really a local look at gaining student voice. And then this was a huge week for our sports teams. You know, I was talking to athletic director Atandi and we believed that we had the most teams still competing in tournaments or moving towards states at one time in the, in the entire state. He was doing some research to see if that was actually the truth, but we couldn't find any other, any other district or any other school really who had as many teams still in the tournament last week as we did. So it's a real tribute to our student athletes, our coaches and our whole community who's helped support these kids. Just to kind of go over some of the highlights, boys' soccer in the tournament defeated Lunenburg in Amesbury in the early tournament rounds. And they lost in penalty shots to Frontier Regional High School this past Saturday in the state quarterfinals. I know that was a tough loss for the boys, but what a fabulous season they had. And congratulations to them. And Coach Willis, field hockey under Coach Giuliano, defeated Bellingham and Joseph Case. And they also lost a close match to Uxbridge in the quarterfinals. So congrats to the field hockey. Cross country traveled to Westfield and completed well in the state competition. And our cheer team did well in their state competition also. Football defeated Nantucket and Hamilton Wenham in earlier tournament rounds. And that was actually, Hamilton Wenham was the quarterfinals. They're gonna travel to Carver High School to play Mashpee in the state semifinals this Friday. That's 11:09 at, at 7:00 PM. And don't forget, we have Thanksgiving in Hall against a very good Hall team. So it's very rare when you see two teams that play on Thanksgiving Day, still in their respective division tournaments. They're both vying for Super Bowl berths. So that, that's a real interesting scenario. If they both make the Super Bowl, what's gonna happen on Thanksgiving? Because that's before the Super Bowl, they, they play it. So we'll see, we'll see what happens there. It's, that's exciting. And then our girls soccer defeated Sturgis in Monument Mountain in the earlier rounds. And they defeated Hampshire Regional in the quarterfinals. And just yesterday, the girls defeated Milbury in the semifinals.
Going to the state championships.
They, they will play Hamilton Wenham at 12:00 PM for the state championship on Saturday.
Yes, awesome.
Very exciting all around. And the community makes the trip to, to see the, the two teams that are still, still alive.
Where is that?
Can you say that again, Dr. Sullivan? Sorry.
I sure will. The, the girls will play Hamilton Wenham at 12:00 PM at Manning Field in Lynn on Saturday, 11:20 for the state championship. And the boys, football, I should say football, is going to play the semifinals this Friday against Mashpee at Carver High School at 7:00 PM. I said Friday, correct? This Friday, 7:00 PM. So very exciting news and I hope folks can go out and see those excellent teams play.
So maybe next time we see Jenna as the steward representative, she'll be a state champion.
She would, she, well, we're hoping. But they're, I mean, all these teams I mentioned have been so incredibly successful. We're very, very proud of them and the, the students.
That's awesome. Yeah, that's, that's some fun information. It's exciting. So I think, I think Jake is, is free to leave, right?
Jake, you're free to leave.
Thanks, Jake.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks.
Wonderful night. Thanks so much for your update.
Thanks, Jake.
Okay. So, so moving on, we have a couple of fantastic students who are pursuing their Eagle Scout Award. Looking forward to be awarded Eagle Scout. And of course, that comes with, as you know, an extensive project. And both have chosen to develop projects that are gonna help Cohasse Public Schools. So I want to thank them for, for that. And I'm gonna actually call them one at a time. You're the first, Josh, you're first on the agenda. So if you want to come up and take a seat here. Yeah. And Josh, I will queue up your presentation and advance the slides as you present. But I want to welcome Josh Young, who is a buddy of Eagle Scout.
Hi, Josh. Welcome.
Thank you for having me.
Hi, Josh.
So, um, as you know, I'm pursuing my Eagle Scout project. Finished the proposal recently and the next step would be to get approval from both the troop and then since I'm building on school grounds, I have to get approval from the school committee. A little bit about me, I'm a sophomore at Cohasse High School, an honor roll student. I've been a scout since first grade, varsity cross country and baseball player, working towards my Eagle rank as of recently. And I've been involved in the CYB SA since. So my project is located at the, this, the newly refurbished softball field behind the Deer Hill School. So I'll be building the two benches for the dugouts at the field because they're in need of permanent benches there. And each bench will be made of aluminum and 15 feet long and will be installed into the ground with quick, quick concrete mix, which is concrete that dries in thirty minutes. So it's, that's all.
Very nice.
This project is necessary because structures they have there now are untemporary. They're not actually set into the ground. And the CYB SA or Cohasset Youth Baseball Softball Association is actually looking for permanent benches for that field. So the, the addition of these, my project will benefit them greatly. So my steps for my project will be first I'll be fundraising in order to purchase the supplies. And then after the supplies have all been purchased, I'll be recruiting helpers for my troop in order to help me along the process of installing our benches. And then after they're installed, it's all done. And I just need to actually get the, finish the Eagle Scout rank.
Thanks.
And the beneficiaries of my project will be both the Deer Hill School and the CYB SA.
Beautiful.
That's, that's about it.
Thank you, Josh. Any questions for Josh? Mrs. Colerie?
I don't have any questions. Thank you so much.
Thank you for having me.
Mr. Dial.
This is a great idea. And I know as someone who has little kids, I love having a place to sit down when I watch them play. So this is, this, this does fill a valid need. What are you thinking as far as fundraising? What sort of, what sort of things would you do?
Well, one thing that a lot of people in my troop do is they hold car washes in order to raise money. So it's a donation base. People come by and they can put in as much as they want, get their car washed. I could do, depending on how much money I need to raise, I could do one, I could do two, as many as I need.
Well, I for one have a very dirty car, so I will be looking for that car wash. So no, no other questions, Josh. Thank, thank you. Thank you very much for, for thinking of the, the school and the softball field.
Thank you, Mr. Dial. Mrs. Stenonge, do you have any questions for Josh?
Um, I guess I'm just wondering if, if all fundraising and everything goes according to a plan. Do you have a timeline planned? Like will these, is your hope that they'll be ready for spring, the spring season or perhaps later?
So the hope is that I can get the actual project finished by early spring so that they can be used during the actual baseball and softball season.
Yep.
That is if everything goes according to plan, which never usually does. So I guess we'll see.
Very realistic of you. Well, I hope it does go according to plan because it'll be awesome to have in place for this upcoming spring season.
Thanks, Josh. My guess is you're just using hand tools to dig the holes for the posts?
Always shovels, I would think. I don't think power tools would really be necessary for that.
Okay. All right. Well, unless there are any questions from the community about the Eagle Scout project, which I don't know if there are. I don't see any.
Questions? Nope.
No questions? Okay. Dr. Sullivan, Dr. Skowens, anything? Is there one?
No, I think it sounds wonderful.
Fantastic.
It's a perfect project.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, seeing no further questions for Josh, then I entertain a motion to approve the proposed Eagle Scout project from Josh Young for the Deer Hill Softball Field dugout benches.
So moved.
The motion was, I'll take Mrs. Stenonge as the mover. So motion made by Mrs. Stenonge and Mr. Dial, drive it through.
I'll second.
We'll call that a second.
Yep.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
All opposed? So that motion clearly passes. Congratulations, Josh.
If you need anything, Josh, let us know. Okay. Just a loop and we'll, we'll help you out.
Thank you.
Good luck and
Thank you.
Thank you to, thank you for, for adding to, to the school property.
My pleasure. All right. So moving on to our next Eagle Scout. You recognize the last name here because Nora Elwell is, her brother was here earlier talking about the path on Bear Hill. So and so this sort of drive to help others and to be the best they can be certainly runs in the family. So Nora Elwell, have you come on up? This is Nora Elwell. Nora is gonna talk about her project as I attempt to share her project on the screen. So just give me one second here. All right. Get away. There you go. Get away, Nora.
Goggle ball pit at Deer Hill School. This Eagle Scout project is by Nora. What is the Eagle Scout project? And Eagle Scout project is a project you need within the last rank of scouting. So this project needs to benefit your community in some way. And it helps develop leadership skills that are also needed. Who am I and why am I here? My name is Nora Elwell and I'm 13 years old. I'm a life scout working on my Eagle Scout project. I'm here today because I'm proposing to do a goggle ball pit at Deer Hill School. A goggle ball pit is an octagonal shaped structure that you play a dodgeball-like game. This project will benefit our community because many kids from the ages eight to 11 who are Deer Hill students may be tired of playing on play structure or running on the field. So this project will be a perfect mix. So here are images of me playing goggle ball at Camp Squanto, which is a camp for scouts. There are some other pictures. So the red circle is where the goggle ball pit might be located. And the school owns this property. And I've already received approval from Mrs. Sullivan, who's the principal of Deer Hill School. So this is a vision of how it might look like when it's done. The entrance could be adjustable by making it a gate for kids who are disabled. So. Materials, fundraising and service. Some materials that I might need are pressure tubes, wood, hinges and nails or screws. Fundraising, all the money will come from fundraising. Some ideas that I have are a bake sale, selling homemade items, a car wash or a raffle. The service, the service work will mostly be done by myself and other scouts who need service hours can also help. And I'm thinking five to six outside of time can help on my project. Conclusion, I am here today to seek approval for my project in due time. And please ask all and any questions.
Thank you, Nora. Are there any questions from the committee members for Nora? Mrs. Colerie?
Thank you, Nora. Wonderful to see you here. And thank you to your family for being such advocates for improving our school and community. It seems that the Deer Hill is very fortunate today.
Yes.
I think this is a fabulous idea. I think you're right. I think a lot of kids would be really excited to see something new to do at recess and outside. I, I think it would be great if you worked with, you know, whoever it is in town that would need to make sure that it's ADA accessible, that's the American Disability Act. So we just need to make sure that it's accessible to everyone. And I think it would be a wonderful addition as long as it is. Need any help with that, you know, we're all happy to give you any resources or help, you know, interact with anyone in town that you might need to.
And Nora can definitely help connect you with folks to ask those questions about, you know, ADA compliance, just to make sure.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Colerie. Mr. Dial.
North, excellent presentation. First off, thank you. Very clear, very good use of pictures. So thank you for, for coming here and doing that. This is a great idea. I think you're right. There, there are kids looking for other things to do. One question I have is, is it staked into the ground? And if so, how would you, have you thought about how you'd get the stuff into the ground?
Yeah, thank you. So I was thinking that either it could be secured by its own weight or I can use rebar, which is steel material and there's stakes that you can pound into the ground.
Fantastic. Well, it seems like you, you've thought of that. So have you, have you, yeah, I know. So have you talked to Josh about getting benches around? No, I'm kidding. This is, this is great, Nora. Thank you very much. I've got no other questions.
All right. Thank, thank you, Mr. Dial. Mrs. Stenonge, do you have any questions for Nora about her project?
I have a question as a, a non-scout. Is it unusual to be trying to be an Eagle Scout at age 13? You seem very young to be doing this and I'm very impressed by that. Is that like a, are you early to this?
A little bit.
A little bit?
It varies how fast you usually go with the thing. But many kids do it earlier. And if you wanted to take it at a slow pace, you could like do it slower, like complete the requirements not as fast, but.
Well, I'm impressed. You're a go-getter. I'm also really excited to have more options at Deer Hill. I think, I mean, you know, you were there at recess. It's, you kind of run out of stuff to do and it's nice to mix it up a little bit. You have played goggle ball at Camp Squanto and I've seen it in like other camp settings. I'm very curious if you'd maybe be able to do like a demo or like a how to play goggle ball for kids who may not be experienced, maybe make like a little video you can share with the Deer Hill. Cause I, I think it would be just awesome to have them start. As a teacher who is on recess duty and a lot of kids don't know how to play games and decide they do, it might be really helpful to have like an expert tutorial from you once it's built.
School committee can play as well.
I mean, I'm in.
Use us as
I've never played.
Yeah, in the video. We could get, we could borrow the cross-country uniforms. I just think it's awesome and I'm excited to have a new game and, and it's, everyone's gonna benefit from this. So thank you.
Awesome. Thank you, Mrs. Stenonge. Nora, one question I have is could you please explain what's sort of special about your troop in this Eagle Scout project? What's sort of unique?
Yeah, so we're the first girls in Cohasset to have a scout troop. And I'm the first girl to get or present my proposal for my Eagle Scout project. So many girls also will be coming sooner or later to present.
Yes, probably more now that you are blazing that trail.
That's awesome.
So that is commendable. So I want to make sure that we put that out there for everyone to recognize. And then, yeah, sort of along the ADA compliance angle, you know, I, I guess just make sure that, you know, we see this in various forms in playgrounds, you know, certain swings or it's swimming pools. There's certain ways that some individuals with disabilities can enter the pool and exit the pool. So just make sure you fully explore what you may need to include. It looks like other ones don't have anything. So there may be some exemption, but you just definitely want to, before you complete the project, check out with, you know, either an attorney or someone that's familiar with that. I mean, you have two attorneys sitting right here and neither of us know the answer. So you have to be a certain type of attorney to know. And it's, you know, so just make sure you do that. Because I'm sure there's some simple solutions if there are requirements. But there may be an exemption too. I don't know. Because looking at the pictures, it doesn't look like there's any sort of accommodations made there, though they may be in violation. I don't know. So other than that, I don't have any further questions. Are there any questions from the community about this project?
No.
No.
Okay. Seeing no further questions, is there a motion on the floor to approve Nora's project as presented tonight?
So moved.
Motion has been made by Mrs. Kaleri. All, is there a second?
Second.
Second made, the motion was seconded by Mrs. St. Ange. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, Nora, your project clearly passes. Thank you so much. Congratulations on being a first and thank you very much for improving the school district.
Well, she is second in the family, or is it still now?
But the first woman.
We don't know who.
But the first woman.
Absolutely.
And you could finish before your brother.
Don't we see that finishes first? Yeah.
Race is on.
That's right.
Right, I know.
It's a nice. That's awesome.
Thank you so much.
Great challenge.
Thanks Nora.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay.
Okay, Dr. Sullivan, proceed, please.
Wonderful. So I'm very excited to welcome Principal Mills, Ms. Ryan, Ms. Jules, our amazing students. I'm going to let Principal Mills take it from here, but I want to thank you guys for being here to show the exciting things that are happening. There's so many exciting things happening at Cohasset Middle School. So incredibly proud of the work they're doing. So, Principal Mills, I'll leave it to you.
Principal Mills, sorry, just before you go, I just want to make sure that people who are participating at home, if there's any problem hearing, I want to make sure that these spotlights and learning are being heard by everyone at home. So if you have any trouble hearing, either Principal Mills or any of the students or the teachers, when they're presenting, please, please, please let Mrs. Kaleri know using the Q and A feature so that we know to sort of, you know, reconfigure everyone so you can hear them. It's important to us that you're able to participate and hear this and appreciate this.
Absolutely.
Sorry for the interruption, Principal Mills.
Alright, well, thank you very much for inviting us and we're happy to have the spotlight on CMS and our students and our faculty. It's, having to follow Nora is, you know, it's a tough, it's a tough thing, but I did put together a slide deck. Really, as we, as you, as the spotlight shines on CMS this year, especially this part of the year, what's most noticeable, I think, is the efforts that we've put into trying to enhance student voice, to really empower kids. And you can go ahead and go to the next slide. And one more click so that, and go ahead.
There's a little delay here.
Okay, and then one more. It's to focus on student voice and student empowerment. We started the year as a faculty on our very first day talking about the fact that student voice has a lot of different aspects to it and that it's not simply students, you know, telling the school what to do, but there's, you know, there's partnership, there's, there's different ways for students to express themselves, to partner, like I said, and ideally to take on like a shared leadership in the school. So I'll touch on a couple of different ways that we've seen that, but the most, I think the most exciting and the most novel is the work that Mrs. Ryan and Ms. Jules has done with our student council. And tonight we have some student counselor, council members who are going to sort of expand on that, just talk about their experience so far and where they hope to have it go this year. So we can go to the next slide. The, like I said, we started the year talking about it. We, with Safe Harbor's help, we were able to use PAIR Institute, which PAIR is just an acronym for partnerships, partners in education and resilience. We were able to access their survey, their student survey that really measures kids' strengths along PAIR, the PAIR Institute's model. The model's based on the idea that we all have strengths and weaknesses and those all sort of support one another. It's, those strengths and weaknesses are integrated together. So the goal of the survey is to sort of tease out where people's strengths and weaknesses are and it allows us to look at an aggregate, to see, you know, as a school, what do our kids have as strengths and what are the challenges along these? So we did the survey in September and I wanted to share the results because it ended up sort of, and you can go to the next slide, it really, I think, supported and validated what we had hoped to accomplish this year. The first, the green is, I just wanted to share what was identified as the students, the most common strength among our students was emotional control, which the definition as the PAIR Institute defines it is that, you know, it's the ability to, you know, control one's, oneself, to control one's behavior, to make good choices, to persevere through obstacles. And as we looked at the data as a faculty, we didn't really see that those are our kids. Like that's, I think if you were to visit CMS, you'd be struck by the fact that our kids, there aren't behavioral issues, conduct issues. Our kids are very much in control and very much self-aware of emotions. So that was great. We were both proud of our kids, but we also felt like, oh, this, you know, for the first time we've used a survey, it's really, it's kind of on the money. And then the next slide is where the kids, the challenge that we found most common and that's something called, they call assertiveness. And as you see in the definition, assertiveness really isn't what we might normally think of as assertiveness. It's more that you have the confidence to speak up for yourself, to express yourself, to self-advocate. And definitely connected to, when we asked ourselves, well, what does that mean? Like what, what do we, how do you help that, what's a challenge? How does it, how do we help kids turn that into a strength? What do we realize, that's student voice, that's student, you know, that's what we had been looking to focus on all year. So once again, we felt like this is telling us exactly what we, you know, we hoped and it kind of validated our efforts. So if we go to the next slide, we shared the data with the faculty and we spent some time breaking it down. Click one more time. We wanted to identify practices that would be inspired by this data. In other words, what are some of the attempts or ways that we could give students more voice? And this is just a small sampling that when I've met with teachers and teams and asked, what are you doing to enhance student voice? This is just like the tip of the iceberg, the things that people, the innovations, iterations that teachers are doing in their classrooms and the teams are doing. So that's kind of, it's like, as I say, we try to kind of turn the spotlight, student voice has been something we're focused on in a number of different ways. And if we click it one more time, I think the greatest example though is the student council and the work that Mrs. Jules and Mrs. Ryan has done in redoing our student council. So at this point, I'm going to turn this over to the real stars that deserve the spotlight and that's the faculty members. So I'm going to just step aside and I'll ask Ms. Jules and Ms. Ryan to come up. They'll end up introducing our students as well.
Welcome.
Hello. Hello. Welcome.
Everyone.
Welcome.
So we're delighted to be here. Erin, Ryan and I have had this sort of vision, I feel like, for a while and it partly for me came from kids like these, sort of identifying that they wanted to see student council look a little bit different because they were like, you know, it's kind of a popularity contest. And we're like, that's not the point. We want kids who want to be leaders to find their voice and to be a part of that. So I think what we wanted to share with you was actually the presentation that we gave to both the faculty and to kids in assemblies to get them aware of what we were trying to do with the new structure. And then we also want to make sure that we actually hear their voices in the room while we're here. So if we could go forward a slide.
Alright, so tonight we're going to be talking about a couple of different things. We're going to start with the vision that was really the beginning of what our conversation was about this redesign. What were our goals for student council this year, but also moving forward, setting up a foundation that we could then build upon and then.
Yeah, and then I think that the power comes from the structure. So the structure is really designed to increase our membership and give kids choice and voice. So we tried to come up with ways that kids could plug in in a very different model than what we had come from.
Which then led us to the development of these new roles. So instead of just a president who had representatives surrounding them, what other roles could we provide that students could then kind of hone in and go, wait a minute, that sounds like a skill I've got. And we made it a little bit more closely representative of actual government in that a student who is excited about writing sees a role for them, whereas a student who wants to get up there and speak and be the face of it, they see a role for them. So we're going to be talking a little bit about those different leadership opportunities in all the grades as well. So instead of just having an eighth grade president running the show, we thought, let's open this up to have sixth and seventh and eighth grade presidents who are able to take the lead and help support their grade overall. So we also then had to re-engineer and consider the electoral process as well.
Right, and then at the very end of our presentation, we'll invite the kids up and let them kind of share out.
We won't try to take too much more time, we want to get to the best part. So the student council vision that we came up with here is this idea of wanting to be more inclusive, more representative, to have effective collaboration among its members, the teachers, the administrators, and of course, all of the peers. So the idea of opening up and welcoming all peer perspectives as well, I think, is key. And then to also, of course, improve student life by giving those students voice and leadership opportunities and choice in that.
Absolutely. So our structure is, I think, both complex and simple at the same time. The way that we designed it was we really wanted the faculty and students to be the base of the whole process. And as Erin mentioned, we are interested in more participation. That was a big goal, was like, it really does need to be at every grade level. So we came up with this structure that you see here and in each grade level, sixth, seventh, and eighth, we have a leadership team. And it's actually five people in the end. We'll explain to you what happened and why we ended up with not four but five in each role. And we'll go through what those roles are in a moment. But also, I think one of the other strengths that we have with this is a subcommittee version as well. So kids are going to go through an electoral process, which we just completed, and so we have our leadership teams at each grade level, but we also have these subcommittees that bring in other voices that are like, you know, I'm interested in this thing and I'd like to see this thing happen, but I don't want to be in front, I don't want to be out there, kind of the, you know, big show. I want to be back here, but I really want to get this thing done. So we came up with this structure to ensure that that could happen and some of those subcommittees will be standing and they'll go throughout the whole year, at least in our vision, and some will come and go. So it'll be like, okay, I'm going to do this event and now I'm out. So we're going to, this is our first year trying it, so, and this was a little quick notice, so we were able to gather up some students and we do have some representation of that subcommittee model. And then we serve as the advisors and we're doing our best to really be kind of taking that backseat and letting them really guide the show, which is really exciting. And then, of course, we loop in Mr. Mills and Dr. Salas with all the decisions and kind of show the kids, this is a, this is an up here level decision versus just you guys kind of deciding you want to do that. And then other places where it's like, yeah, let's do that, you're ready to go. So that's the structure that we're working on this year.
And here were some of the leadership roles that we developed. So of course you have your standard presidency with the person who's leading, who's working very closely with advising staff, who is sort of the leader and the developer, who's working with this team and leading the team. Then you have a press secretary who is not only writing down minutes from each meeting, but then also reporting them out. So our press secretary is working with the post-repress to make sure that they are also aware so that there can be transparency and information shared out to the community. Speaking of sharing information, we would also have a comms officer, somebody who, again, would like to be more of the creator or the producer. So this might be somebody who is creating posters to post or announcements to make to get everyone aware of what's going on. And then, of course, student ambassador, who would be a student that would be a go-to for the community, who would be a listener, who would be a liaison, sort of say, this is, these are some of the issues that have been brought up and we thought this would be better for students to have a check-in person rather than feeling like they would have to go to us with their concerns or issues, to have students speaking on their behalf. And this is actually where our four turned into five because it was such a popular position that we felt, why not have two?
Right, and we had a couple of very close votes and we were like, I think the, the community is saying, we need two people in each of these grade levels and that's actually been really exciting.
Yeah.
To do that. And then what was great is I wanted to share, I didn't even get a chance to tell Ms. Ryan this, but I overheard a sixth grade conversation where they were parsing out their roles. No, I'm see, I'm the press secretary. So what I do is this and that and you are the comms officer and so you do this and that. And I was like, oh my gosh, that's the best thing I've ever heard because they, we were worried, like, do they understand the different roles and is that going to work? And just to hear that in operation was just super exciting.
Yeah, it's a wonderful thing too because it's showing us that this is a work in progress and in development and I'm all for that. I think that's a great idea that we can change it as we go to fit the needs of the community at large. And so we also then had to change the election process.
Yeah, so the selection process was multi-tiered. And so the first thing we did is we had kids attend assemblies by grade level and we announced this process and shared the structure, just like we're sharing with you, as well as the roles and responsibilities. Then this was, to me, this was the big difference. What we did is we asked interested students to complete an application and we got nearly 80 applications, which was exciting. A little wild, but it was so, so exciting. And we, I, I'm so delighted by this process, I know Mrs. Ryan is too, because it really did draw out the leaders. So it took that concern that kids expressed about popularity contests and set it aside because it said, let's find out who's qualified. And it was based on how well did you write your application? And we had some extraordinary applications, extraordinary applications. After that, we put together a little body, which we called the Electoral Board, and it was Mr. Mills, Dr. Salas, Ms. Ryan, myself. And we actually had JP Giglio come as the former eighth grade president of the student council and be a part of it. And our job was to review and on a scale, grade literally, each of the applications and that's how we rose to the top, the folks who made it onto the ballot. And then that was our next step. So we selected and announced that student council candidate pool and then we really wanted to make sure we maintained that voting piece so everybody felt that they could be heard. And so students elected those new leadership members using a ballot form in a more traditional way. So it went really, really smoothly in the end. It was, it was great.
I'd say so, yeah. I think we're off to a really good start. So our first meeting, we did a full student council meeting and determined that grade levels will be meeting separately weekly at their utilities, at A utility, and that as a full student council and an open student council, we would be meeting monthly. So this would be where officers would be, but also subcommittee leaders and any other interested students and faculty are welcome to join us.
Right, and we had 30 people at our first meeting, which was really awesome and all, all sorts of interests and grade levels were represented. So speaking of grade levels and representation, shall we?
Yes, we shall.
How are you guys doing? You ready? Okay, so let's start with our sixth grade friends. Why don't you guys come up? And go ahead, introduce yourself honey and then talk about what sixth grade wants to do.
Hi, I'm Ashley Wagner and I'm one of the sixth grade student ambassadors. So I serve as the liaison between the administrators, student council, and my peers. And I'm really looking forward to being a part of the new student council model this year. So here are some ideas that we had and we're hoping to accomplish. One of them was some fundraisers to support ocean trash cleanup. Another was a winter semi-formal dance. And the third was a beach cleanup field trip.
And these guys generated these brilliant ideas all by themselves. I, you know, we, I just kind of came out and how we doing, how we doing? Oh my gosh, amazing. And the typing and doing the whole thing is totally incredible.
Love it, that's so great.
Awesome. Alright.
Hold on, so does anyone have any questions?
Yeah, oh, that's right. They might want to ask.
Nope, no, no problem. No, you didn't know, you didn't know. But just any, you guys can just ask if you guys have any because I want to make sure if you have any questions for each representative.
I just think it's great because it seems like there's two service opportunities and one fun thing and I think that sounds awesome.
Thank you.
So I have a question. What the, the ocean trash cleanup and the beach cleanup, are they limited to Cohasset or are you guys going outside of Cohasset to do this? Or do you know yet?
I think they're going outside of Cohasset.
Awesome.
But I wasn't sure, it wasn't me who came up with the idea, but it was the communications officer and it sounded really good. But I think it goes outside of Cohasset.
That's great. That's, I think that it's really. That's great, that's, I think that it's really, really awesome to see environmental activism at that young age. I was just thinking about it myself, how important that is becoming, as I was hearing on the news that there is pandemic pollution, all the tons of PPE that people have been discarding, plastic items, testing kits, masks, they just, they are ending up in the ocean in addition to all that plastic that we already have there. And it's just, that stuff really troubles me, so I love this. I think it's, I mean, obviously, you know, everyone's got to do their part to sort of see a better global result. But this is, you guys are certainly doing yours, so thank you, that's very interesting. Thanks for your presentation.
You're gonna love the advocacy, going back to that peer data.
Yes.
Really addressing it, so, you know, kudos to you, I'm really smiling just saying it. You can see my smile, I'm very happy.
Any others? Okay, you're off the hook, thank you, sorry to bring you back.
Unfortunately, given the quick turnaround, we didn't have a seventh grader who could join us tonight. But what they, what they did, which was exciting, is the kids can do things very, very quickly, and they threw together an amazing Google form. And because they also want to have a winter dance, the kids are pent up with that desire to have a fun event. And what they did was created this survey that we then rolled out to the entire middle school to get their input, and how should we do the dance? What do you want to see? How's the decorations? So that's gone out, and we're getting that feedback. And when the kids get together next week, I'm sure we'll address that. They too are driven by cleanup efforts, but they want to be doing something a little more local. They're bummed out that the backfield after lunch is not representative of the group, and they want to make that better. And then are really excited about a themed spirit week before the holiday break. So we're figuring that piece out.
Yeah, we had a spirit day planned, but then, storm, the storm hit, and then Oris.
Not this year, but.
So we're thinking, let's, let's touch it out to a whole week then, we'll make up for that day then.
That's great. Good stuff.
Well, Mr. Kearney, who's not here, would love the fact that they're focusing on some cleanup around the school grounds, because he was just complaining to me at about 5:00 PM before this meeting, how unhappy he was with the current state of the ground. So that's awesome, it's great to see. So he, he would be very excited about that if he was here.
Hi, my name is Jacob Sasso, and I'm the newly-elected eighth grade president. The Student Council and I are very excited for the upcoming rest of the year. After only two meetings, many ideas have poured out, one of them being a school dance that would be held sometime in January. Both students and faculty have been working very hard through these difficult times. Our mission is to reward the wonderful School of CMS with a fun, energetic, and COVID-safe dance. We also have other plans for a community service day and a candy, and candy treats with notes to spread kindness around the school. With this being said, I think this, this year is going to be one of the best at Kohasset Middle School.
I think so, too. Anyone have any questions for Jake?
Love those service projects. They are awesome.
How did you guys select the charities that you are targeting here?
Question.
Kohasset Food Pantry and Cradle to Crayons. If you know, you might not know.
Yeah, sorry, I don't know.
It's okay, it's okay. It's a group effort, so.
I believe that there, I know Project 351 ambassadors have often used these two charities to, or I should say, have worked to benefit these two charities. So that might be some of it. That's great.
Sure, sure. We can't expect the president to be in charge of every single element of it. This is why he delegates.
It's actually refreshing.
Got these five other officers.
Exactly, that's right, that's right.
Good job.
Good leaders' jobs.
All right, anything else? Thank you, Jacob.
Thank you.
Great job.
You don't have to, sweetie, but would you like to?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Jake, you mind if she comes on? Yes, thank you so much.
Welcome.
Hi, I'm Mia Peoples, and I'm the grade eight press secretary. My job is to take notes at the Student Council meetings, and I also give updates to our school newspaper, which is the Pond Street Press, by emailing the head of the Pond Street Press, like, weekly updates, Monday.
Awesome.
That's what I do here. I post our meeting updates, too, and Mrs. St. Ange does the official.
I don't know if you've had an opportunity to really view the Pond Street Press and how wonderful it is.
Entreat.
I put it in my newsletter, it's a, in that question, it's a. And it's on, more importantly, online. But you guys are doing a wonderful job with that, too. And I love the connection.
Exciting.
Very exciting.
You're beginning to build a very nice resume.
So I missed your first name, what's your first name?
Um, Mia.
Okay, so I'm, I'm wondering, do you have, do you have an interest in like journalism or anything like that? Or news at some point when you're, when you're getting older?
Well, I really enjoy reading and I like writing.
Okay, so there you go. Awesome.
Wonderful.
Well, great, good for you.
Thanks for your role, and thanks for getting involved, and I see you guys are really doing a great job as a team. So, love it, love the roles, love the collaboration.
Thanks so much for your great presentation.
Hello, my name is Faisal Rashid, I'm an eighth grader. I recently moved to Kohasset about a year ago. I'm peer leader, and I'm a journalist for the Pond Street Press. I'm here on behalf of a subcommittee I would like to create to be, for awareness on global warming, global warming and climate change. So you may not have heard of, like, there's projects like Team Seas, and like, like there's the Climate Summit, and like what Paris is doing and all that. And I hope that, like, Kohasset can sort of join, like, the bandwagon of sort of, like, helping the climate. So I want, like, to help, like, so, like, an example, like, what's happening is sort of, like, the storm that happened in Oris there in October, late October, it also, like, it affected our schools, like, it partially destroyed the football field. You may have seen images of it. But I would like to sort of, sort of change how things, like, are run in the town. Sort of, like, optimize our schools for what may happen in the future related to weather, and sort of reduce emissions that are produced in the town. And pretty much just create projects to help reduce waste and help, like, recycling efforts throughout the town.
I love it, that's great.
Great, I love it, too. Have you been in touch with the Alternative Energy Committee at all?
Haven't heard of it.
Well, I am going to get you in touch with them, because they are eager to do what you are eager to do, and I feel like you could be a force to be reckoned with, compared.
Yes, how fortunate for Kohasset, they moved here, I think that's so exciting.
There's a lot of stuff kind of in the works right now that I think you'd be very excited about in terms of alternative energy and potential for our town, so. I'll, I'll, I'll make you, I'll make the connection.
I think also Sarah Burgess.
Sure.
Yeah.
And you may know we have a very active green team in our middle high school. But I think probably there's more room there for the middle school to grow into that a bit. So I think you have some real opportunities behind your passions here, so, good for you, that's great.
And just a side note, I'm, I'm a great admirer of this person. And one of the things that I think is so great about him is that he actually threw his hat in the ring as an applicant and did not win the race that he put in. And then he came right back up, and he was like, I'm getting involved, and this is what I want to do, so.
That's great.
We have a lot of. A way for us to sort of see that that aspect of the model works, because that was really important to all of us, that if a kid puts themselves up there, we need to be able to catch them and say, hey, we need you, you know, please.
And you got to make a huge difference, all of you are, that's wonderful.
It's great that you're taking advantage of this, because you're clearly, you know, you're a confident guy. You have an interest in activism and public service. And so I'm glad that you're taking advantage of this opportunity, because I think it's going to really, you know, improve your overall education. I think it's, it's great, it's great to see all of you doing that. You each obviously have your own interests, and you're, I think, furthering them through your, through your involvement here. So, thanks very much, that was a great presentation, thank you.
Fabulous. Well, any overarching questions from the group, or anything else to?
So is the presentation complete?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so are there any questions for, from this committee members for either the faculty moderators or the students? And we'll just go around in alphabetical order, Mrs. Caleri?
I was wondering how you feel this model is doing at bringing the Mecca voice into our student government.
I would be honest and tell you, it's still a real challenge. I think we've had more interest with the new model. But I'll give you an example of a way that we've been trying to insert that. Is when the kids were talking about the dance, I challenged them, like, how do we include our Mecca students? Because they traditionally don't show up at these events because of transportation. And they were like, well, we have to make that different, and I agree. So that's a thing that we're still, and that's like, obviously going to be something that we're going to talk with Mr. Mills about. But that would be a wonderful thing, to be able to have that as an outgrowth. And it seems so simple, but it would be profound. So we're not, we're not, I don't, I haven't yet seen like a piece of the structure that's really making it happen just yet. But I think just having kids thinking about things in a different way should actually make some difference.
Yeah, it seems like it's also a great role for student ambassadors.
Yes, absolutely.
And make sure, not just Mecca, but all of.
But just that piece of, like, make sure, like, even something as simple as when kids were talking about the dance, and they were using it for Christmas, I said, we can't do that, that leaves people out. What's a better way to talk about it? And they kind of identified different ways, and that's why you're seeing winter as the theme, as opposed to a Christmas holiday.
I would also say that their piece about the subcommittees allows students who didn't even originally want to run or felt comfortable with it be able to sort of, you know, you know, become part of Student Council, it's very permeable. As, as the subcommittee's forum, any student, you know, has the opportunity then to join on. And, you know, Erin Paul mentioned it, that a lot of the meetings happen during the day, because you're really sensitive to the fact that after-school time is really hard and might keep some kids from being able to participate. So I think in the structure, they made sure that it was, is inclusive or would encourage inclusivity. It's just living with it, I think we're gonna, I hope, you know, I, I trust that it's going to be effective to accomplishing the, you know, the goal that you mentioned.
And one of the subcommittees that kids are looking for is a diversity subcommittee, and there's an effort already underway in the middle school. So we're looking to link that, it's just, you know, it's that balance between, we really want it to be student leadership. So, you know, we're trying not to be like, you should go talk to so-and-so. So as soon as the idea pops up, we're like, okay, great, here we go, let's, let's guide it. But we're really wanting it to be like, if that's their interest, great, let's do it.
Caleri, Mr. Dow?
This is fantastic. I mean, you guys have taken, you know, this, this thing, you know, student government, which was always this, this thing that people did, and you dissected it and broke it into something that's going to be meaningful. And that is, that's tremendous. And you, you've created opportunities for leadership for students. And we've seen our student leaders today, they're very impressive. And one thing I've learned, just through my life and career, is that leaders, people think leaders are just, they're just the leader, you're just born a leader, you're not. Leadership is learned, it's learned through experience and trial, and, and you learn through tenacity, you learn through not winning the election, but still going out and becoming a, a head of a subcommittee by creating your own thing, by following your, your, your goals. And you've created a vehicle for students to do this, and this is, this is tremendous. I really, I really have a lot of optimism that this is going to be good for the kids and great for the school. And I like to see that it's not just, you know, inwardly focusing about, hey, how can we have more fun? How can we have dances? It's, it's a lot of service projects, there's a lot of bringing the school together, it's surveys. Hey, everybody, what do you think the dance should look like? These are great skills for the kids to have, and they've got great advisors who are coaching them in the right way. So thank you for, for, for leading this forward, thank you for coming tonight. Thank you, our student leaders, for coming tonight. I am just very impressed with, with everything I heard, so thank you.
And Mr. Dow, Mrs. St. Ange?
I guess I'd just like to add to kind of what, what that side of the room is saying. It takes a lot of guts to break something down and rebuild it, so, good on ya, that's, that's a gutsy decision to make.
You know, and it's scary, too. Design something, redesign something, you have all these visions and these hopes in your head, but when we got 80 applications, they're going, oh my gosh, this is working.
It's one thing to have like a beautiful flow chart, and it's another thing to have 80 kids come out, and then kids come out and be ready to act. And to be, like, I just feel like our school and our town, our whole community is lucky to have you take, take a risk and do that, and to have the kids step up. And I just think it also really highlights the awesomeness of middle school. Like, these kids are so ready to show who they are and what makes them individuals, and what they're passionate about. And you're really giving them the opportunity to do that, beyond just your academic subjects, where some can shine and some feel less confident. And this just provides so many more opportunities for them to be like, look at us, we're middle schoolers and we're kicking butt out here. So, so great job to all of you. And it's also a ton of time and effort, on top of homework and everything else, and trying to get enough sleep. So really, really huge thumbs up on all of it, it's awesome.
Thank you, Mrs. St. Ange. Yes, you two should be really, really proud of yourselves. I mean, I, I commend the students for putting yourselves out there. I, I, perhaps unsurprisingly, I was big into Student, Student Council. And, and I remember putting yourself out there, and, and it really was sometimes a popularity contest, which perhaps, again, unsurprisingly, didn't always go in my favor. But, but you have transformed that into an experience that sort of, it, it, it separates this experience from, from popularity. And I guess you're replacing sort of the primary process with this application process.
Exactly. So you're. These are our primaries.
That's, that's right.
All right, civics teacher, take a, take a breath.
I'm very excited about planning civics this summer.
But it's, but it's really, really incredible, because it, it naturally, there's two ways you have transformed this from a popularity contest into something more meaningful. And, and that is, one way is obviously how you've designed the election, so that you are sort of basing the students' candidacy on their application and, you know, the, you know, the merit that they showed, they demonstrate within the application. But also, you have developed positions that don't necessarily carry a social prestige with them. I mean, naturally, president will always be something that, you know, well, president is sort of the head, right? And that's something you need, I mean, there has to be a facilitator. But there isn't just this hierarchy of positions. It's, they're, they are interest-driven positions, and also results-oriented positions, okay? So that's another way that you've transformed this from a popularity contest into, into actually a meaningful educational experience. And as someone that, that, I, I just really subscribe to leadership opportunities as part of a formative education, educational process, because it instills in you self-confidence and helps you figure out, as Miss St. Ange alluded to, or actually expressly stated, who you are and what you want to be and what voice you want to bring to the world. And that's why it's a really important supplement to in-class instruction. And you are bringing something extremely meaningful. This is one of the most meaningful things I've seen so far as a school committee member. And you just should be so incredibly proud of yourselves for devising this and, and creating this, this entire, this entire process and this entire system. And I can already see, you know, that the students have this defined interest, and they had to go through, it's, it's a more meaningful selection process, they had to apply for it. They had to think about what skills they might like, or experiences they might like, what skills they have, and how they're going to apply them, and how they advertise themselves as having these. That teaches them how to maybe apply for a job, you know, very, in a sort of microcosm way. And, and then gives them an opportunity to sort of express themselves and their interests through these roles. So I cannot thank you enough, I think it's a, devising this is a testament to the educators that you, that you both are. And you're, you're an absolute asset to the cause of public schools, thank you so much.
In fact, I, I got so excited about this that I forgot the question that I had. Because it really is, it is, it is tremendous. Well, and the question was, and, and Dr. Sal, this is probably for you. Is this, I know you have your student advisory committee. Are these positions linked into that student advisory committee, or is that a different process? Or is that something that it may surprise them?
Interestingly, you should say that, because they, they were looking for ways to link voice. And what we're trying to do is give an overarching district perspective, so we have Deer Hill involved as well. So it's, so that was what they were talking about with communication engagement, is could they have liaisons to some of the Student Councils? And what we're trying to inspire is exactly what's going on. So I mean, that's almost the work. So, I mean, that's almost the work is being done. But that, that's exactly where we are in terms of how we link more of an overarching committee to a, you know, boots on the ground, get it done at a school committee. So, um, you know, I don't have an answer for you yet, but these are the linking pieces that I can see, um, you know, coming in the next, uh, you know, this year really, as we try to work out how our different structures tie in together. And you know, this, this is such a tribute to the middle school staff, the leadership and the students. Cause I, I couldn't see this happening a few years back necessarily, uh, as easily as it has. And I think it's because of trust that's built between the staff and leadership here with Principal Mills and Dr., and Dr. Salas, and then the, um, the students. So it's just, everybody's rising their game up. And, you know, you, you know, you have a great middle school and it's all about the students. And, uh, and that's what I see happening. It's, it's great. It's, it's a, it's a very nice thing.
I would love to thank, uh, Principal Mills as well, because he's been supportive of us this entire process. He was there with us on Big One, trying to reimagine and redevelop this. So thank you.
Thank you.
I think, I think Principal Mills might deserve a little round of applause here.
I didn't know if you were gonna come back up here, Principal Mills, but I just. So excited to see the assessment results and that empathy was the second highest strength. I feel like that's really something that this will help foster growth in and give us a trajectory for this. Cause I think if the middle school was a hard place for kids to be when it was sort of part of the high school. We can all agree on that, right? But now we're seeing that we have empathetic kids who are leaders and peers. And I just am so excited about this. I think it's so fabulous. And resilience is such an important, I mean, such an important trait and characteristic and skill, right? And, and I, I just really, I feel like this is so fabulous. So thank you.
It seems like after, you know, giving the survey, looking at the data, and then now taking, I mean, countless, countless actions, uh, we're in a position where we're happy to share with the community that today is sort of the coming out of, for that, you know, for the data. Um, I, I was really impressed with emotional control. I wasn't surprised, but I was very impressed that it was the, the most common strength. And when we looked at subgroups like, you know, gender or by grade, it was absolutely consistent with the exception of our sixth grade and their greatest strength, well, their second, emotional control was their second. The sixth grade's greatest strength was empathy. And I thought, is there any, anything that's, that is hopeful for a building is seeing your youngest kids and empathy is their greatest strength? So we're really excited and we're, we're so fortunate to have the kids we do. We're, we're a tremendous student body. Thank you for, for pointing that out though.
Thank you.
Pause it, no to, uh, to end that on and you all so much.
Thank you everyone.
Should we wait for them to get back or?
Yeah.
Maybe not.
I think.
Well, you know what? I think, I think we can, Mrs. St. Orange has seen the presentation, so we can move on. You can start presenting it. I don't want to take anyone else's time.
Nope, I understand completely. All right, shall I proceed on?
Please do.
Okay, so, um, next, I, what I'd like to do, as we dwindled out here, what I, what I'd like, I'll wait, I'll wait a second.
I'm just getting autographs, sorry.
Uh, what, what I'd like to do is to present, uh, an overview and, uh, sort of a review of where we are as I, as I do every so often on school committees regarding our safety measures. Um, and also regarding where we are with our vaccination status. Um, we've, I've given quite a few updates on that. Um, and I just promised it would have sort of a complete picture of where we are, which I'll provide. And I, I'd also like to, um, with some change factors, uh, that Jake actually mentioned in terms of way we're configuring our, our cafeteria, along with the high vaccination rates in our high school. Uh, we are, um, in a position, I believe, to really look closely at our spacing at the high school to determine if it is indeed at this point a measure that we need with the things we have in place to continue. So I'd actually like to, although it's, it's, it is operational, I, I, I feel it's something that the community should sign in on. And I'd like to ask you at the end of this, uh, you know, there's a point in the presentation where I ask you for a vote on whether, uh, effective tomorrow, we would be able to, uh, remove spacing, uh, restrictions from the high school. And I, I just want to remind everyone who's watching out there that the state right now imposes no restrictions on spacing uh, in, in dining or in, um, in, uh, in the classroom. And it doesn't mean that that doesn't tie into quarantine rules, but there are no restrictions as they had, there had been in the, in, in previous, uh, well, last year. Uh, so that, and then also, as you're gonna see from the data, we are very close to the 80% of them going to the high school. So close that I believe we will hit that 80% within the coming days. And I, I do think it, and this is why I had told the community about this and communicated hopefully as thoroughly as I could, that we, I, I would like, uh, at your, um, approval to get a vote on masking pending a couple of things. Pending our continuing bargaining obligation with, uh, the CTA, uh, and, and our unions. Uh, and then also, of course, receiving official approval from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education that we could indeed, um, remove masks at the middle and high school, which again is considered one building. We've gone through that whole process. So in other words, we could remove, i- if, if we, once we hit the 80% and we fulfill our bargaining obligations, that we could remove masks for, uh, for vaccinated individuals within that building. So that, that's a vote that I, I, I think it's important to get now because I do believe we're gonna hit that, uh, very, very soon, in the coming days. So I just want to share my presentation, but I, but that's sort of the overview of, um, where we are.
Dr. Sol, before we go into the numbers, just one procedural question.
Yes.
Uh, and a reminder for me and, and people, anybody watching, the DESI guidance requires, you do have to apply once you hit the 80%, or file a form? Or I guess what's, what happens? You get an 80% attestation and then you report it? Do you apply? What's, what's the next step?
It's a very simple attestation form that, um, that the superintendent fills out. And it goes to, cause I've gone through this, uh, once. Goes to the state and they're very responsive on it. And they, they get back to you, um, with that. And then it becomes a, a local decision. But what I'm asking is for that local decision now pending these, uh, those two, uh, obligations of ours. One is to get approval by DESI and the second is to continue our bargaining obligations with, with our unions.
And then just because I'm very procedural, but it is a, you send something to them and then they send you an approval back. It's not just, I submitted the form, so we're good. They look at it, make sure it says 80%.
Absolutely.
Then they, then they say thumbs up.
They, they stated initially that they would get back to us in two days. They actually got back to me within, um, minutes. It was, it seemed.
And then got back to you again.
Well, and then they got back to me, uh, within a couple of days to tell me that they had, um, you know, reconsidered where we were. So, um.
That's helpful. Thank you.
We only have purview on the school building, like school buses are still masks, right? Because transportation is like a federal mandate.
Yeah, and I want to commend that, that the, the mask mandate is still in effect till January 15th, except in those buildings that can attest to having 80% of the population. That's students and, um, and adults in the building who work regularly in the building, uh, attested to, uh, being vaccinated.
Yeah.
So, and yes, you're correct. Masking on buses is a, um, is a, is a regulation that will not go away regardless of, um, of what we have at this point. Regardless of building status. And right now the quarantining rules that we've been following and that our spacing has helped with, uh, are, are still in place. So, so they're not shifting. There's, there's some considerations that we certainly, I'll walk you through as we, we get to it.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome. So I'm gonna share my, um, presentation. So, okay. All right, so, uh, first I just thought I'd start. I, I put this together a little differently than I've had in the past. I, I, when I give updates, they're two-week updates for mass.gov. What that does obviously is it, it, it creates a sense of where we are over a two-week period. And I broke it down to one, to week by week. So this, these are the weeks that, so in other words, this is week ending, uh, first week ending, uh, September 9th. You can see 15 is, this is the town where we are. So you can kind of see, sort of gone back and forth and we've, uh, week by week fluctuated under the 15. I think the highest we've had in any two-week period was about 18, um, during the, the school year. So it just gives you a sense of where we are. And, uh, of course, you know, I didn't go into this week, but November 11th, um, was a Thursday. And by the way, these are reported on Thursday. That's why you see Thursday, that's when fast.gov filled with their data. Stop me if you have any questions about any of this. Um, and, uh, this is where we are right now. This week we haven't, knock on wood, we haven't had any, any cases reported. So it would say zero, but you can see the, we did have an uptick, uh, at our, um, uh, Deer Hill and Osgood. And again, this involves staff as well. So this is students and staff. And again, all of these cases are, uh, outside of school contacts. And, um, we haven't had in spread school, in, uh, spread in school. This is a rather awkward slide, but what I'm trying to give you is just a sense of what we're dealing with on a weekly basis. So these, I, I ask on Thursdays to get a sense of where we are, um, in terms of our, um, quarantines. And again, these are quarantines because we haven't had any quarantines caused within the schools. These are quarantines for students who have come in contact or have had, and this is staff as well, or have had COVID themselves. And they've had a need to quarantine. Just to give you a sense of operationally how we're doing in keeping kids in school. Uh, and again, we do provide, um, an opportunity for some synchronous connections during the, during the day for students who are, um, who are at home. Now this will, uh, undoubtedly change, uh, for the, the better, I would say, the higher. Um, because this was from the 11th, so last Thursday, and it did not compute the partially vaccinated five to 11-year-olds who had the opportunity to, um, to, to get at least a, well, their first dose of, of vaccination last week. So right now we still are, this has been kind of holding steady, but it's 85% fully vaccinated of eligible for asset residents. And then the 11% of eligible residents who are partially vaccinated will, no question, rise because of our five to 11-year-olds having a chance to have one dose. Um, we did make the decision, working with the CTA, to, um, to require all school employees to inform their school nurse of their vaccination sta- status. And what that means is either vaccinated or unvaccinated on or before Friday, November 19, 2021. And that requirement was sent out, um, on Thursday. So, uh, we, we are requiring that. This is, should not be confused with the requirement to be vaccinated. This is a requirement to attest to vaccination one way or the other, so we can have the information. So I wanted the committee to know that. This is something, oh, this is something that, sorry. Well, I'm, you've given you a little preview of everything. All right, there we go. The silence is killing me. All right, so here we have, so this is something that, um, has come out, uh, over the last, uh, few weeks. And, um, I, I feel it's important for me to inform you of it. Just so you have it in your, in, in your thoughts, that OSHA has made it a requirement for private employee, employers having 100 or more employees to, um, to have their employees be fully vaccinated by January 4th, 2022, or in the alternative, to test each week at work, those, those folks who are not vaccinated and to wear masks. Right now, this does not apply to public schools. But, um, and I did talk to, uh, CTA leadership to inform them of this. There's a possibility that this could be coming. And if it does come, we will have a, a very tight window in which to, um, bargain this with our associations, regarding the, the need to, because it is a change in work conditions and something we would have to bargain. But it is a, um, it is a possibility. What this means is the potential impact is all, and I have to be very upfront that this is very uncertain, you know? But it, it is at the point where, you know, we're, I think it's, it's a, a good idea for us to, uh, let you know about it. But employees will be required to be fully vaccinated or that have to test weekly and wear masks at work. And we will be gaining clarity over this in the, in the next weeks. And we're being advised by legal counsel to inform the school committee and also to inform our unions of this. And it, and as of now, I've done both. So I just wanted to be aware of that.
What do you have to bargain if it's federally mandated? Like what about it is bargained?
It, it's still a bar, it's still something that we have to bargain because it's a change in work conditions to require them to vaccinate and to require them to, um.
Well, it's vaccinate or test weekly, right?
Yeah, our legal counsel says it's still an obligation of ours to, um, to bargain this. So there'd be a tight window.
Quick bargaining session.
Yeah, all right. But you.
But there's implementation, how they're testing, where they're expected to test, things like that. There's implementation.
Right, that's what my question is.
Yeah, it wouldn't be a negotiation of whether we do it or not, because that is kind of set.
Yeah, and, and the, and the, the issue here is that, and again, it's very hypothetical that it's happening, but it, the possibility's looming. So it would be a very tight window to, to get that done. And I, I think the associations understand that as well. All right, so I want to get to some of the attestation data and where we are right now. So, and again, this is, uh, as of today. So our, um, again, total students enrolled in the high school are 424. We have 371 vaccinated, which comes to 88%. Our total number of staff at the, at the high school is 97. It should be noted that, you know, this is, we, they, they don't have to attest until Friday. So at this, this is just data. I'm just giving you the data. And the number of staff attestations received indicating they are vaccinated are 75. The staff attestation percentage indicating they are vaccinated is 77%. We've received 76 attestations. Um, and the vaccinations still to be received are 21. So we're looking for.
Attestations still to be received?
Attestations. So we're looking for 21, um, for, for the high school.
So should say vaccination attestations still to be received?
Yes. Yes, sorry, there's a word here missing.
And is that 77%? And it's, sorry for math, but just gonna have to do it. Is that 77% of the 76 or 77% of the 97, which would be the total number of staff?
It's, it is, it is the percentage of the total amount of staff that we have at the high.
So that's 77 of the total staff, you were 77% have attested they are vaccinated.
That's correct.
Remaining have either, that is, they aren't vaccinated or have not given their attestation yet.
That's correct.
Okay. It's like those concentric circles. I had to try to write.
Yep, because remember before, all we asked is for those who have been vaccinated to attest to that.
Right.
Now we're asking them to attest one way or the other. So the data is, hasn't.
So that 77% could go way. So that 77% could go way up once those 21 come in.
Correct. And we're still close, that this is why I think it's important for you to consider, consider where it would be. You'll see in a minute how it works all out for our building. The total number of students and staff at the high school are 521. The total number of students and staff at the high school who have attested they are vaccinated is 446. That comes to 86% vaccination.
May I just ask one clarifying question?
Yes.
And I, I know you've said this before, but I just can't remember. Student vaccination information is just automatically sent?
So what I'm told by our, our nursing staff is that the, we, the MIIS system has the vast majority, if not all, and we have not received any additional attestations that would increase that number.
Okay.
So it's, it basically.
The state database.
State database is, is showing exactly what we are getting.
And that's how you're measuring the little kids too, right? Because that's.
When we can.
Right.
Right now, obviously, none of them are on.
Right. That's what, when.
I mean, some of them are half-vaccined, right? So that, it's in.
That was my will.
It's in the database. Yes.
Yeah.
It's in the database.
Okay.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
And at the middle school, we have, and I broke it down, even though you're gonna see them together in a moment. We, total number of students enrolled are 318. Students fully vaccinated are 213. That comes to 67%. Again, that, that number will increase as those sixth graders are able to be fully vaccinated in a number of weeks. Total number of staff at the middle school, 49. Number of staff attestations received indicating they are vaccinated is 44. Staff attestation percentage indicating they are vaccinated is 89%. Vaccination attestation received, 45. Vaccination attestation is still to be received, 4. Total number of students and staff at the middle school, 367. Total number of students and staff at the middle school who have attested they are vaccinated, 257. Total vaccination percentage for the middle school is 70. So if you put them all together, we are at 79%.
Wow.
Are there any decimals on that?
I think you can do that.
It's a clean 79.
The clean 79?
It's 79.1 something.
Oh, okay. Definitely round. Got that part of my math?
It, it's close. So, you know, for your decision-making process with masks, you know, I want you to be aware of how close we are. And the fact that we're very close, very soon we'll.
Well, it's inevitability that as of November 19th.
Yeah, it is.
Over the 80%.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, I think, I mean, I would think. It's not, you can't say it's inevitable, but I would say it's, the odds are.
More likely than not. Yeah.
Yeah. One way or the other, whether, you know, a few students are, it's just a few people.
Right. So given Mr. Olensohn's presentation, I would imagine that the remaining attestations will be likely more vaccinated.
Yes. I, I would, I would agree.
By my calculations, 711 seems to be the number that hits us over 80.
Yeah. And what, we are 701?
711 people.
Oh. Yep.
Thing of the convenience.
Not to be, not the convenience stuff, but we are 701.
It was on the slide. I stole it from there. But yeah, so 703.
Yeah.
So you need eight more.
Okay. Now, Deer Hill. Has, again, 63 staff, and we have 60 attestations they are vaccinated, which is indicating of 95%. I don't know, quite frankly, about the three. I didn't get that information. They haven't yet done it, or they haven't tested in a different way. But that is at least, you can see the numbers are, are much greater. And then it's basically the same at the Osgood with 97%. So it gives you a sense. So I wanted, unless there's any more discussion about that, I, I just wanted, I just wanted to give you the data. That's what I promised I'd do.
Can you just go back for just a second?
I sure will.
66. Got it. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. So some spacing changes at the high school and middle school. You'll see something that you haven't seen in a while. It's our high school and middle school gym. We were able to move our chairs from this, and we moved 90 of them over to the one-third of the gym. And we've set up situations for eating right now where students can space on bleachers. And they also have the chairs and the chairs in the cafeteria at the high school. So the spacing possibilities are here. We'll talk about some of the limitations and real problems with doing that. But this provided us, and this is a, this is an example of like a dot. There was dots at six feet across the bleachers.
So there is, there are still, yeah, that's a one-third right there.
There is. There's the one-third, and this, this would, you know, again, I'm asking for consideration of removing spacing just for the high school. I want to make sure about that. We'll, we'll talk about the others, but just for the high school, effective immediately. The middle school is still able to have their lunches, the lunches they have now in a format where they're actually not even on the bleachers. They're using these chairs. Again, one of the complications we have that a lot of schools don't is because we have a shared cafeteria. We can't really look at them as two separate schools in that regard. They are one. So we, we figured out a way to create a situation where the high school kids can have lunch, and we can still be very set about where our middle schools eat and the distancing that they, they have. So what I'm gonna be asking as we go through this is, I, I mentioned this, effective tomorrow, I'm gonna ask for a vote about removing spacing at the high school. That, that goes for spacing requirements. Doesn't mean that we won't still advocate for keeping spacing when you can in the classrooms, but this is what I'm, I think we're at this point with our, our high attestation number, vaccination numbers, and then also, and then the potential of removing of spacing requirements at Cohasset Middle School, Deer Hill School, and Joseph Osgood School. Just a discussion at this point, because there's time to go through, on January 18th, 2022. This is spacing. This is not masking. The 18th is the long weekend that comes from Martin Luther King Jr. Day. And that would afford us some, some time to be able to watch how things go and then to be able to move the furniture as we need during that weekend.
So Dr. Sol, and I think that because so much could happen with regards to elementary.
Yeah. We're not gonna.
I think this is just more an introduction of the concept. We're not even, I'm not even gonna entertain a lot of discussion at this point, because it's all too hypothetical. But we, you are seeking.
Yeah. And this is something I reviewed in my leadership team, and we, we talked about what we felt would be appropriate. And I'll talk about the reasons. But that was, I agree. I think that we're, our, our more pressing need with spacing is the high school and the, the other buildings. You know, that's something we can do down the road. So why, what is the rationale for the removal of spacing at the high school? First of all, we have a high vaccination percentage in the high school. See that our, our kids are, are very highly vaccinated, and that, that does limit the potential need for quarantine for in-school exposure, limits, and it greatly reduces the possibility of the spread of COVID-19 for in-school exposure. A very low number of Cohasset High School students contact COVID-19 this school year. And again, that's, that's in total from outside exposure, it's under five. We do test and stay in place to eliminate any potential in-school created quarantines. We want to increase collaboration opportunities for students, the spacing limits. We feel this is a big step towards providing our high school students with a full developmentally appropriate learning experience. And we had a need to change the spacing in the gymnasium to allow that learning space for sports and for our phys ed as the, the weather gets colder and they're, they're moving inside. And quite honestly, that spacing situation that I showed you in the gymnasium is very difficult to maintain, if not impossible, for our, our high school students on the bleachers. It's, they can eat there, but to maintain the appropriate space is really very difficult, almost untenable. So that's that. So I guess we'll talk, talk a little bit about some, some of my rationale, and then we'll take a vote on the high school, if you're okay with that, Chairman McClellan?
Please.
So this is the rationale regarding, and this, we talked about as a leadership team, for removing the spacing at the middle school, the high school, and Osgood on January 18th. The timeline will allow for students ages five to 11 to be fully vaccinated, should the parents or guardians wish, and I want to respect that, that, that right, to have them vaccinated. Timeline also allows for two full weeks after the conclusion of the holiday break for us to measure case rates within schools, in the Cohasset community, and in Massachusetts and the country, and to make decisions accordingly. The long weekend around Martin Luther King Jr. Day, as I mentioned, it allows us to be able to move the furniture. We have to bring all of our calf tables for Deer Hill back in, for instance, to be moved accordingly within the schools. Test and stay is in place, and, you know, this is exactly where test and stay does come in handy, is if you're removing your spacing and you are gonna have situations where you're gonna have close contacts that would have to quarantine because you don't have spacing. That's where test and stay is. And that's the meaningful timeline of test and stay that we saw through, and that's what we're, that's what we're attempting to do here. And then, yeah, very much so at the, at the younger level, we really want to increase the collaborative opportunities to students that the spacing just limits. And it's a big step to providing them with that developmentally appropriate opportunities within the buildings. So what I'd like then is a requested vote regarding the removal of spacing requirements at the high school, effective tomorrow. And there's really no action, as Chairman McClellan mentioned, necessary. You know, if you, you would like to discuss that, I'd be willing to do that, but there's a lot of ground to cover. I just wanted you and the community to know what, as a leadership team, we were, we were aiming for regarding spacing at the other schools, because I know that would be a logical question if I were watching this and seeing a vote coming at the high school, is, well, what about the other schools? And I wanted to give the community that information ahead of those questions that would definitely come up. So I'll leave it to you, Chairman McClellan, but I.
So I, I think that's relevant to present what your thought process is in terms of the timeline for the other buildings. But I don't even really want to have too much discussion relative to that, because it's, it's really sort of hypothetical at this point, based on a lot of variables. We will have a full discussion as it becomes more reality before you ask for a vote on that. So I think tonight, you're asking us to consider the removal of spacing at the high school specifically. So I think that, you know, we should have the, the discussion focus on that particular issue. So I will, I will just ask if it's all right with everyone, just get sort of a soft vote here, or if we just look towards the community voices first before we have our discussion?
There are no questions.
So that makes the decision easy? We'll just go right to Mrs. Colari.
Have we, by we, I mean you, heard from anyone that has a child? I, I just, this all makes sense to me. The data looks great. I'm, you know, do we have families who are concerned about this, who can't get their kids vaccinated?
Concerned about the spacing?
All of the things that we're talking about right now. Yeah. Like removal of masking and spacing.
When you say can't.
Like medically fragile kids, or kids who are allergic to things, or have conditions that require them to.
I don't know the answer to that.
Okay. Well, that means you haven't heard from them. So that's your intention?
I have not heard from them.
Okay. I just was wondering if anyone had reached out to you.
No one has reached out to me specifically in, from my conversations with nurses and our, you know, anyone. I haven't heard anything regarding that.
Okay. Because that's my only.
Yeah.
At this.
Great question.
Sort of, yeah, a choice whether you want that added, well, people look at it different ways, and I totally respect that. But like, from my perspective, it's like whether you want that added layer of protection or not, or whether you even consider it to be an added layer. But there are some people who cannot access that option for their kids. So I just was wondering if we heard from any of them. So that's, I feel like, okay. Thank you.
Um, thank you, Mrs. Colari. Mr. Dial?
Thank you. This very fulsome presentation. Data looks good. One thing that I've heard from teachers that I'd like to get some more information from you on is, I understand there's, the spacing, since we're focusing on it first, has presented some fairly significant challenges to the educational process and just the maintenance of spacing and so on. And that, to me, I think, you know, thinking about kids first, and, you know, obviously, we want safety, but we also want to make sure they have a quality educational experience. If you could expand a little bit more on some of those things that you were saying that, that, that teachers have done and students have been facing.
Well, I mean, it is our, it's a collaborative enterprise education. You want to get the students together. You want to get them working together. You want to get, I mean, in an ideal scenario, you want to get messy, and you really, really want to work with them. And we, we all understand that that's just not a great situation at this point. I think at different, at varying levels, you know, you, we've had to be artful about the way that we get kids together and the time we, that constitutes those students being together, looking at the quarantine guidelines. Again, the quarantine guidelines are more than 15 minutes or more within three feet mask. If you're outside of three feet, that's fine, and you need to be six feet when dining and having your mask off at least six feet. So if you are within that, that distance for the required amount of time, those would amount to quarantine situations. So our staff, I went into an elementary class today in a learning walk, and we had the teacher who was really timing the amount of time that the kids were together. And she was keeping a mindful distance, but they were working together. And then, you know, the timer switched, and they switched partners. And they just, they, they were very mindful of the amount of time that they were together because of the quarantine guidelines. That's what it's required. It's required a lot of flexibility on our staff. It's not easy. It's not easy. And, you know, it's, it's particularly hard at our high school, because our high school classrooms are tight. And then this is one of our, we, we were very transparent about that in the, in the spring, when we were trying to get them back. We really had to work to get them in the rooms, work our schedule to get them in the rooms. But it's difficult to, to do that, to keep the kids apart. And I greatly respect the efforts on the staff to do, you know, to keep them apart. And we looked at it as, as a measure that we felt confident about, to A, keep our kids in school, and B, keep them as safe as possible. And I have to say, the data's playing out that it worked pretty well. But there's a point when we do need to look at the data and also look at the learning that's happening. And for me, that point has hit right now at the, at the high school. I think we have a logical shift that we needed to make to provide the kids with social emotional opportunities in the, in physical education and sports. And that doesn't line up anymore with advocating for this greater spacing need. So I hope I answered your question. It, it is, it is a tremendous challenge. And I know a, a lot of districts didn't have the ability to do this. Or quite frankly, some of them made the decision that that need was more important. I, I just, for one, wasn't willing to take that risk. I felt, I, I feel like we were very cautious and conservative, and I am that way with kids. So that's, that's what we, we, we did as a, as a, as a leadership team, and you were a part of that, and I stand behind that. But, and I still think that there's some data to look at, and there's some time before we make that move with our other schools because of their vaccination, ability to get vaccinated, should they want to, and the data we have in our schools, yeah, I think it's the time for the high school to move.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Ms. Dial, you?
I'm good.
Okay.
All right.
Mrs. Anj.
So, thank you. This presentation has been very helpful, very clearly presented. Something that I've seen at the school where I work, which has not been spacing, we've been masked, of course. In the past few weeks, we've had a lot of kids who have been needing to be a part of the test and stay program. And during that time, I noticed in my peripheral vision, as I walked down the hall, that our nurse's office has gone from one nurse to three or four. And so I'm curious, if we reduce spacing and then introduce the potential for in-school quarantine or test and, like, the test and stay candidates, do we have the nursing staff to be able to respond to that? Like, can we increase the number of people in that office in order to have an efficient test and stay in the mornings?
That's something we have to look at. Now, again, our data with the high school, we, we, the kids are right now.
Mostly vaccinated.
They're mostly vaccinated, and right now, they're mostly not getting it. I mean, we've had very under-five kids since the start of the year.
Right.
Contracted. I was always cautious, and I continue to be, about the operational burdens of test and stay.
Right.
Hingham, for instance, has done a thou, over a thousand tests to keep the kids in. We. Hingham, for instance, has done over a thousand tests to keep the kids. And we, we haven't done that. We had that one situation that we worked through. We haven't had the need to do that.
Of course.
Now, may we, is it a scenario where we may have to increase nursing staffing? I think it might be.
Just for efficiency, to get kids to class in the morning, right?
Yeah. It's not such an easy thing to do, you know, to find the nurses, to get those nurses in there, to get them set up. I was always very aware of that.
Yeah.
So it is, it's an absolute consideration. Again, that's another reason I want to look at things and leadership does through the Martin Luther King Day holiday, see if, see what our numbers are. Because clearly, if the, the rates rise in our community, then there's going to be more kids who are going to need to be part of that program, and we're going to have to prepare by getting the staff.
Right.
Right now, at the high school, for the variety of reasons, I think it's, it's worth, you know.
Oh, yeah. I'm not saying this to dissuade us. I'm saying this because that is something that I hadn't thought about, and probably you had.
Yeah, definitely.
But now that it's a part of my everyday, like, that is a lot more people, there are a lot more nurses in that office than I have ever seen there before. And it's in order to make sure that test and stay can be executed efficiently in the morning, and kids can get into class or go home.
We can advocate for help.
Yeah.
But from C S A, you know, we have a coordinator of test and stay that works with our lead nurse and our nurses that are supplied by C I C. So we, there is, there is support available there. But I've always been leery of the overload on that need when times get tough. Times get tough, every community needs that.
Everyone's.
And I don't want to put our community in a, I didn't want to put our community in a situation. That's why we've been waiting, watching the data. And I think we need to continue to do that a little bit longer for those other schools.
My other question is, in a caf, so, so obviously, it's shared eating space for middle and high school, and the individual desks and chairs will remain for middle school, middle school students who need, for whom we will maintain distance.
The middle school will be, can completely fit their lunches. They're not even changing the schedule. They can completely fit their lunches in the cafeteria and that area of the gymnasium you saw.
Okay.
The high school is a little different.
Okay. And so will there be different furniture for high school, or will?
So the furniture will be the bleachers.
Yes.
There'll be the senior calf, which is outside. They'll be round, they're round tables that they'll be on and that they're, you know, that are actually out there.
Right.
So that's, that will happen. And that will, the spacing, we won't fight the spacing on that because it's just untenable to do. And there's really no other way to get all the kids in the high school to eat lunch. And to maintain the middle school physical structure of keeping the kids separated, because you, they need to be separated by furniture.
Yeah, no, I understand.
There's just no way, we have to supervise that they stay separated, if we're going to try to keep separation.
And then in a classroom setting, people will be able to cluster desks and sit in, in like, more.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it, I will, I will admit, it's very hard at the high school.
Yeah.
Even now.
Yeah.
To maintain spacing in some of the rooms because it's just, they're just so small. The rooms are so small. And it doesn't really, it's not like the spacing is much different than we had pre-COVID. They're just small rooms.
Yeah.
And so it's, yes, they'll be able to be a little more free with their collaborative techniques.
Okay.
And the high and the middle school will stay the same.
Yeah.
And for a while, as will the elementaries. Just till we get to the, I know we're not footing on that, but I think it's all part of us, the same thought process.
And then if we move to remove spacing and, and then our attestation rates reach 80 and we get approval, and we move to remove masks and numbers go up, then we reassess?
Oh, I think we can always reassess. I mean, I think we've, we've done that throughout.
Yep.
We, I mean, I think one thing that I feel really proud of with this group is we've done that with everything, whether it be something that was external, that could put the kids at risk, you know. We've, we've, I think we've shown a track record of making adjustments throughout. And I would think we wouldn't, we wouldn't stop now.
I agree. I just want it to be an explicit part of the conversation because I think that is concerning.
I appreciate that.
You know, it's not like, oh, the end, we're, we're done now. I think we need to acknowledge that it could change again, if need be, correct?
Completely.
Okay. I think that's it for me right now.
Thank you.
Okay. Question? Thank you, Mrs. St. Ange. Mrs. Colari, are there?
There is one question from Ally Andrews, 171 Hull Street. Are those quarantine guidelines for all students, both vaccinated and unvaccinated?
I'm not sure what quarantine, no. So the quarantine guidelines that I mentioned, if you're vaccinated, you do not need to quarantine.
I think that's the response. Any other questions, Mr. Colari?
No.
All right. Seeing none, and every committee member has had an opportunity to ask some questions, I don't have any. Is there a motion to approve Dr. Sullivan's proposal for removing spacing at the high school only as of tomorrow, November 18, 2021? Motion has been made by Mr. Dial. Is there a second to approve that proposal?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Mrs. St. Ange. Let's do a roll call. Mrs. Colari?
Aye.
Mr. Dial?
Aye.
Mrs. St. Ange?
Aye.
Aye, Craig McClellan. So that motion does carry Dr. Sullivan by a vote of four ayes. So please do implement that, and you are free to handle that operationally as you wish.
Thank you.
Starting tomorrow.
And I, we will, as always, watch, you know, how that progresses. So I, I'm not done.
Chapter two.
Yes, the chapter two. So, this is freaking me out. Okay. All right, there we go. So this is the discussion portion regarding mask mandates. Now, I want to make it clear that we do have pending bargaining obligations with the C T A, and we also have to get our final D E C approval for this. And we have not yet reached the 80 in order for me to gather that approval. But as you can see, it appears it's coming very soon. This is just the guidelines. And just to make it explicit what the, what it says, you know, that you're permitted to lift the mask and David Clime for vaccinated individuals pending your local decision once we hit the 80%. So I'm going to be asking for a vote pending those obligations in a bit. But I wanted to just bring up, from my view, some considerations for you as we're making this decision. We do have a high vaccination percentage of students and staff in the middle school and in the high school. We have low community and school population infection rates. As we've mentioned from spacing, there's also some pedagogical advantages that removing masks provide. The physical and social emotional benefits of removing masks for students. The potential, and on the other side, potential higher chance of transmitting COVID-19 of masks are not one way or all. I mean, they, they have improved to help limit spread. We have a weather change, holidays, more activities happening indoors. There are fewer opportunities during the winter to open the windows to increase airflow within our buildings. And we need to ensure that unvaccinated individuals wear masks while respecting individual and family choice. And we should never be in a scenario where we look at an individual who is wearing a mask as a necessary reflection of that individual's vaccination status. And what I mean by that is that anybody's always free to wear a mask. And we're going to see that in our culture for a while. You know, I, there are times when I'm fully vaccinated, I'll wear masks, you know, if this ends up, you know, because I think, you know, you have to be conscious of it. And that's, that's a choice. People should have that choice. And I don't want to stigmatize anyone ever for anything they're doing regarding this, but particularly for wearing a mask. So I thought I would leave it to you to have some, some conversations regarding that. Yeah. So it's a requested vote after any discussion you want to have for the removal of mask mandates for the middle school and high school, pending reaching final D E C approval, which would require that 80%, and C T A bargaining obligations. And there's no action requested regarding masking at any other school at this time for obvious reasons. So I will leave it.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Sullivan.
It's actually, it's a little exciting.
Thank you, Dr. Sullivan. Just to clarify for everyone watching, you know, this is, this, this vote in of itself would not have any immediate effect because of the obligations that Dr. Sullivan articulated, also the fact that basically the condition's precedent is that we have to fulfill our obligations, and that we also have to receive official D E C approval. So even if we vote in favor of this today, it's not happening tomorrow. But my understanding, Dr. Sullivan, is that it would be advantageous to you as a superintendent to have this approval in hand so that you can handle it operationally without, you know, waiting or presenting to the school committee in the future, should we fulfill those obligations or satisfy those conditions precedent at some.
Yes, yes.
So that's, that's what we're doing here today. Mrs. Colari, are there any comments from the members of the community that are watching?
No.
So having no comments from the community, we'll just move straight into school committee discussion. Mrs. Colari, do you have any points or questions?
Can we do it in reverse order?
We sure can.
Start with Lance, who thinks he's first in the office.
Sure. Mr. Dial loves to go first.
That's unfair.
Mr. Dial loves to go first.
No, Mr. Dial does not love to go first.
He's really good at that very quick.
Well, I can't go first because I have no questions. So it's, one of you three have to go.
I'll go first.
All right.
Not that I love it. So, Dr. Sullivan, I imagine since you're here talking to this, doing this presentation, that you're weighing the costs and benefits of this. There's, there's legitimate concerns about disease spread, pandemic, and so on, and risks and that. And then there's the pedagogical need for our students to be able to, and we heard from our high school advisor today, that people looking forward to being able to unmask and see people's faces and so on. So one of the things that I view our role in this is to weigh, help weigh those things and reflect the committee. And so what I'd like to understand is, you know, your thought process up to now, leading you to put together a presentation, come to us, where do you see those risks and rewards, especially on the reward side and on the risk side, but more that have brought you to us to say, hey, I think we're ready. Once we get to that 80% threshold, once we do our bargaining obligations. You know, can you walk us through your thinking as a?
Sure. Yeah. Well, first off, I think if I can speak to the pedagogical matter because, and Dr. Koller, feel free to, and this would be good, you know, if we had some teachers to talk about this. But the biggest thing I've seen throughout the pandemic is more silence in classrooms than I've seen ever. And it's, it's a, it's a, it's a little bit uncomfortable at times to be in a classroom that usually is filled with noise and positive chatter back and forth to basically hear nothing. I also think, you know, it is an extremely challenging thing to not be able to see someone's full face as they're delivering instruction. Now, that, for me, pales in comparison with safety. I think safety is always more important, but it is a factor. Okay. And so, so what that means to me is just as, just really, as the same with social distancing, it's very similar for me, is when do you hit that point where the pedagogical impact and the safety, which is the data we have regarding where our rates are, where our vaccinations are, when do they hit that point where now it's not in the benefit of the student to mask? It's always a good idea, but, I mean, meaning it can, it's not a bad thing to mask. But when does the, the obstacles involved with pedagogy outweigh the danger of not having a mask in the classroom? And to me, that point is when our vaccination status is high, and that, and when our rates are low. And right now, we have a sample of some times since school has started where our rates at our middle, high school, we haven't had a student yet who has had, knocking on wood, COVID, who goes to our middle school. Haven't had one yet. We've been under five at our high school. Okay. So that in itself, that, that, that balance for me, at this point, has moved to, to say that I think it would be something to look at, not as necessarily, to your point, Miss St. Ange, as something permanent if things would change. But it would be something we could look at right now, doing at the, at the, at the middle and high school.
That, that's helpful.
Anything you want to add there?
No, I think you covered it. Yes, the balance.
And I agree, the prevalence of the vaccine has, has really helped provide a level of safety and security that helps make that, that judgment call in that way. I do want to echo something, Dr. Sullivan, that you referenced, and I think this is very important to me for, as we think about this. We should ensure that people who do continue to wear masks, either because they're unvaccinated or because they make that choice, are not stigmatized. We don't want people to say, and, and also, people who are unvaccinated themselves are not stigmatized for that choice either. There are very valid reasons why, there are invalid reasons, we won't go into those. But there are valid reasons why someone could make that decision. And so, you know, as this is communicated to, you know, if this decision passes, and as it's communicated, I think that's an important thing for, you know, teachers to communicate to students and just be part of that conversation, that wearing a mask is not a bad thing. And, you know, being unvaccinated is, you know, something that can happen as well. And so we don't want anyone to be unvaccinated and be afraid to wear a mask.
Correct.
So that's what I would be really concerned about if it was there. So having that welcoming message to those constituents is, would be important to me. So that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Dial. I don't know who's ready.
I'll go.
Okay. Mrs. St. Ange?
Um, I have a question about data. Is from the M I S S database, is it possible to know how many students in our middle school who were previously ineligible for the vaccine have already received one dose of their?
I don't know.
Vaccine?
I don't know how they do that. I assume, I don't want to assume. I know that they, obviously, mass.gov provides information about eligible populations who have partial vaccination. But I don't know how it gets computed in the M I S. I set out to ask my nurses.
I'm just curious because of our sixth graders, many of whom are still 11.
Yeah.
And when we look at our middle school numbers, 318 students, 213 are fully vaccinated. And I know some of those kids are sixth graders, and some of the ones who are not vaccinated are seventh and eighth graders.
Yeah.
I guess what would just really put my mind at ease is knowing that those who are going to get vaccinated are, before we say, yeah, take off your mask. And I understand that masks will be worn. I just think that as a teacher and a mom and a community member, I think, who were so close to that population being fully vaccinated, like mere weeks, you know, like my, my children will have their second shot on November 27. And then two weeks after that, it's not like we're going to go like, whoop it up in New Orleans or something, go, I don't know, put ourselves at risk. But I just think that.
Sure.
Like, I don't want to be so close and then, and then jump to this decision too, like, right before the kids who are going to be vaccinated are fully protected.
So let me, let me be, yeah, I do understand that. And to be clear, it, having the 80% and fulfilling our bargaining obligations gives you the right, as local officials, to make these decisions. So you may choose to keep the middle school mask and to unmask the high school. Like, there are things you can do, and you can make those decisions. I can, I can support that. I would understand where you're coming from. Just saying, there's a lot of decisions at your power there to make some decisions. If you remember, when we did think that the high school was its own entity, that's exactly what we were going to be voting on. We were going to be voting on keeping the high, unmasking the high school while keeping the middle school, which was a shared building, masked. Just because you're able to remove your mask, doesn't mean that the local authorities need to allow it. That would go for, you can make a determination who, who would do it, in my opinion, based on that. I don't, there's nothing that would stop you.
So just, just so I'm clear, sorry to jump in, but is the request to, for both the middle school and high school, or just for the high school at this point, from the presentation?
So I'm not making a request. What I'm doing is I'm, I'm saying we're going to hit the 80%. And what I would like is for you to tell me, because it's a policy.
Yeah.
What the school committee would like to do regarding masking at our middle high school. I'm not, there's no request being made. You asked me a particular question about my thought processes, which I gave you, but it really comes down to your authority and your decision based on the data that's at hand here. But I, but to. and your decision based on the data that's at hand here. But I but to Ms. St. Ange's point, you absolutely could make the determination to unmask one group in that building and not the other. Obviously, anybody who's unvaccinated needs to wear a mask anyway.
Yes, understood.
So there's some protection afforded them by that, but these are all considerations that you.
Okay. I think I'm ready to pass to you. I might come back. I may need to come back.
Yeah, that's what I was struggling with. I was struggling with the disparity between the student vaccinations in the high school and the student vaccinations in the middle school. It's 20% higher in the high school. That's a huge difference. And it seems like it's not like they're not different communities, right? And they're not even necessarily different parents. It's probably a result of not being able to have kids fully vaccinated yet.
For some.
Right. I have a hard time seeing this as a one size fits all approach right now because there hasn't been the opportunity for the families who do want their kids to be vaccinated.
Yep.
They haven't had the opportunity to do that yet.
Conversely, just to be clear, DESI views the one building.
Right.
So they just would view the sixth grade population who hasn't had the opportunity to vaccinate as an unvaccinated individual or individuals who would have to mask. So it's not, it just just to be clear, it's it's.
So like six.
This is why they don't make the decision in DESI. They they give the permission for the local authorities to make a decision. They're not saying, oh, you've hit 80.
I understand.
But but it is one, but we are one building. So just so that's the counter to that, I guess.
But they're going to be concentrated together.
Well, our middle.
It's not like it's going to be like an even distribution of.
No, well, we can.
That 80%, you know?
I look at what we were going to be doing. So say, just bring us back, when we did have that thought of the high school being a separate entity and voting on that, we were going to have to create scenarios where we, when they were together, we had some some structure around who was wearing a mask, who wasn't. You know, in other words, and we were going to create scenarios. They're pretty separated in the building. They don't really interact very much, but they're, I mean, they are under one roof with one ventilation system. So I mean, it isn't a, it's not a complete separation, but they are they are rather separated in their areas. But we would have had to come up with ways to keep them.
Yeah. So just to be clear, I'm not against unmasking. I just feel like there may be members of the community who this, to Ms. St. Ange's point, would like, it would be disappointing to think that your child is gonna, if you are a person who wants to get your child vaccinated, it would be, I don't know, too soon.
Well, that but yes, and I just want to also just to keep the thinking going, they'd be wearing a mask and anybody who would be unvaccinated would have to.
So that brings me to my next question. How is that going to be enforced?
Well, we're we're going to have to, as other other schools have, we're going to have to be able to provide information about who needs to wear masks, not necessarily who is vaccinated or unvaccinated, can't provide medical information.
Right.
But who needs to wear a mask, and we're going to have to work as a team, always putting, you know, the 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 effort to work with families first and foremost in the way we deal with the situation. But we're going to have to work as a team with the teachers, the educators who are in front of the kids, to to help make sure that those kids who need to wear masks wear masks, and the administrators supporting them, just as they support their teachers every single day, and me supporting the administrators and teachers in doing that, always trying to work with families as opposed to, you know, looking at this as a punitive action in a very difficult time. We all want to work together. But there's just no way to to do it unless we are able to provide that information. And that's what other districts who are, Norwell, for instance, Norwell High Schools in that regard, that's that's how they're doing it. You know, they're figuring out ways to have those conversations and to to deal with, you know, look, if you're not vaccinated, you have to wear a mask. That is the rule. That's that's the that's the that's the state mandate. So that is something that would have to happen, you know, where I think, we talked about this at one point, my my thought was, because I've really struggled to have anyone from any legal aspect of life give me a direct answer on this for variety of reasons. And I've just come down to, after after talking with you, so there's just no other way to do it. I mean, look, if we're gonna try to hold this as a rule, we have to be able to have these conversations with people who we know need to wear masks and make sure they wear masks. So we'll attempt to do that to the best of our ability in the same pro-student, pro-family approach that we've had all the way through this. And that's but that that should be a consideration. It can't be just the honor system. It won't be just the honor system. It will be us working hard to to try to deal with the situations of an unvaccinated person not wearing a mask. We're gonna have to deal with that. So with that in mind, you know, if you are a student in sixth grade who hasn't had an opportunity to get a vaccination, then you would be, or your second party of vaccination, and you really want to do that, you would be wearing a mask, and you'd have at least the knowledge that the administration and teachers will be working to make sure that anybody else around you who doesn't already have a vaccination is also wearing a mask.
So I am not trying to be argumentative.
No, I'm not.
Unopposed to this.
I'm trying to give you the.
I need to like talk through some of it, like.
No, it's good. It's good.
As much as we are like so proud of our middle schoolers for how resilient and empathetic and what else, what was there, we're asking sixth graders and seventh graders.
Emotional control.
Who are around other kids to like, like I, you know, it's hard to be, it's hard. So anyway, that's, I mean, we have a question from Zoom.
Okay. I also, Mr. Kearney's been listening at home. Is he, he indicated he may want to be able to chime in here. I don't know if you can promote him to a panelist.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. I didn't know to do that.
Makes sense.
I want to see him. He.
He was, yeah, he was in the attendees.
Looking for you, Mr. Kearney.
He's on the bottom.
Oh, see him. All right.
Do you think we're gonna get feedback if you do it? Or should Ashley do it somehow?
I can't.
Okay.
My mic is off, as we know from my botched presentation.
All right. All right, Paul, you're muted.
I have a one. Nice to see you all. Sorry, couldn't be there tonight. Kind of hanging out with Jack. He's a little under the weather. So it's nice to see, it's nice to see you all. So if you want me to try to chime in here, it's a tough one. I agree with Ashley. It's, you know, it, I've been watching the meeting tonight, and the first one looked like it would went pretty easy. And this one is, I don't think, it sounds like we don't have all the answers here because we got the middle school and we got kids wearing masks, and now we're going to police them, and then we're going to tell kids, and we're going to pull them out of class and tell them to put masks on. I mean, it's, it's tough. You know, and you raised the question earlier, Ashley, about like, there's certain kids that can't, for some medical reasons, get, they can't get vaccinated. So how are we going to do that? Are they going to be, and I, you know, I saw it playing flag football. A kid said, hey, what are you wearing a mask for? And, you know, the kid was like, well, I'm quarantined, but I can still wear a mask and play flag football. But I just thought that was like, you know, that has to be a kind of a conversation and how we don't bully, you know, people that feel in a different way if for what reasons they're vaccinated or not. And, you know, we got, we got to be really sensitive to that. That's my concern. But I know tonight, we're just, we got other things to worry about, too. We got to get through the the Teachers Association. So I think they're going to have a lot to say on this, and I'd like to hear from them, too.
I did invite them to the meeting, Mr. Kearney.
What's that?
I did invite the CTA to the to tonight's meeting.
Which is great, because, well, I think that's going to be in, we're voting tonight to do that so that we can go into collective bargaining with them to present this, correct?
Well, we have to fulfill our bargaining obligations regarding masking. So yes, we would have to continue that that discussion.
So the vote tonight is to remove the masks with the intention that we still have obligations to kind of iron out. Is that correct?
Yeah, the vote is to remove the masks.
Right.
Pending bargaining obligations and DESI approval, which.
Okay.
You know, I, well, I mean, I believe we would receive, we would receive after, you know, submitting the attestation that we're at 80% for the middle high school.
Which is fantastic, by the way. Yeah, okay. Yeah, I'm good. I'm good with voting on this. Absolutely.
Dr. Sullivan, can I jump in with two other questions?
Of course.
One, you mentioned Norwell has adopted a, I guess, a, have they dropped their mask requirement and they're now?
So they've hit 80%. I know a few other schools have.
What's what's been their experience, both, I mean, you touched on their experience with enforcement and that, and that's a challenge. What's been their experience in other districts who have reached the 80% and have decided to remove masks? What's been their experience as far as infections or contagions and the like?
I don't know that. It's been a very small amount of time, just a couple of weeks for for very few schools. So I don't know that that has been, and again, they have test and stay that they're putting in place regularly anyway, because they have no spacing. I know that in Norwell, there were some challenges, from what I understand, that they had to address them from the principal's level and did so, from what I hear effectively, I don't know too much detail, but they're certainly trying to enforce it as we would. And they're finding finding a level with it.
And then and then just to be clear, and this touches on Mr. one of Mr. Kearney's points and Ms. Collier's points, the approval would only apply to vaccinated individuals. So it's.
Right, that's correct. Right now, anyone who is unvaccinated is required to wear a mask. And I know from my previous attestation attempt, the botched one, I guess, they they made me say that to them, the promise that you you need to make sure that you understand that it's your obligation that unvaccinated individuals will still need to wear a mask if we lift this requirement for the vaccinated individuals in that building because of you hitting 80%. So there was no gray area there whatsoever.
Yep.
Okay, Mrs. Collier, how are we doing on community feedback?
We have a statement from Elizabeth Fraser, 27 Lee Hill Road. I don't think it's fair to keep the middle school masked when the high school students are unmasked. DESI considers the two schools as one. There's no data, not one student at the middle school who has COVID, according to Dr. Sullivan.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Fraser. All right. Anyone else have anything else?
I just, I do.
Okay.
I just kind of in response or in to, a question came up because of the way Mr. Kearney was talking about policing mask wearing. And I know that you said we would deal with it like on a family to family basis, but I'm just curious, kind of in your thought process, how how will that be done? Like, is there like a nonverbal cue established? Because, I mean, kids are like, if someone's supposed to be wearing a mask and they're not wearing a mask and the teacher knows who it is, and then you tell that child to wear a mask, then very obvious who's supposed to be wearing a mask, right?
Yeah.
So like, what's what's that going to look like?
So, you know, we as educators, we deal with a lot of difficult situations, you know, every single day. And there's a way to handle something in every scenario that is appropriate and particularly germane to the to the situation. And I would think that they would use their same skills that they use in dealing with a student who is clearly showing signs of anxiety or signs of any type of problem, that you don't call a kid out in the middle of the room.
Of course.
That you work with the kid, you know, you might, you might, you know, go out outside and talk to the student. Clearly, this is a scenario where the administrative support is going to have to be virtually involved and very much tied to to support the the teacher. And that is, yeah, that's, we're just going to have to work that through. I have I have high faith in that collaboration at all my buildings between, of our buildings, between the principal, assistant principal, counselors, and staff. They work very well to deal with a myriad of incredibly difficult scenarios. And I think we'll find a level to deal with this. Yeah, I think I think there's, I think it's very difficult for me to give a complete answer with that, because every scenario requires something maybe a little different in reaction. If there was a stock answer to that, we wouldn't even have a problem. But but I think at what we've tried to do throughout all of this is to put the fact that this is a very unique, difficult situation with a lot of feelings about this in the forefront, so that we would work with families, we'd work with students to try to make sure that they understand what they should and shouldn't be doing based on what we're being given for rules. We'd continue to do that, you know, but obviously, there's there's a progress progression in that, that if we needed to, we would have to follow. But our first impulse would be to work on this from a very social emotional standpoint and to work with both families and and the kid on that. But at the end of the day, you know, it is a mandate that people who do not have a vaccination in a building, that goes for staff, too, wear masks, and we'd have to follow that. And we'd have to do what we need to do to 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 get that. But but we, no one would approach it with, you know, an iron fist. It's just not the way we we do things. And we have very skilled educators who are able to to manage those scenarios. And I don't think that would be any different with masking.
We have another, I can't tell, though, who it's from, because.
Karen Norton.
Well, it says then Beth Nelson's address on Jerusalem. I don't know. I'll just read what it says. Parents may choose not to vaccinate their child, although it is readily available at local pediatricians' offices, pharmacies, et cetera. What then? Masks until the end of the year? Tons of kids of all ages, vaccinated and unvaccinated, are participating in contact sports indoors at multiple local sports complexes unmasked. That's Beth Nelson, 222 Jerusalem Road, but then it also says Karen Norton Mohawk Way.
Oh, maybe they're, maybe they're together.
Maybe.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, there's that.
Yeah, that.
There's what's happening outside of schools and the world around us. But we're we're controlling schools and we're controlling schools based on what we have for requirements. Quite frankly, it has been very different throughout the pandemic than requirements for other places.
Right.
I'm not going to even get into the, I mean, we want to protect our kids. That makes sense. But they're not, the rules that apply to restaurants, to other places, are not necessarily the same that apply to schools. We don't have a choice in that matter. We have to, and I'm just speaking to you because you wrote the question, but we have to abide by the fact that we don't have a choice about unvaccinated individuals needing to wear masks. They're required, and we have to hold that up, just as there were other rules that we had to abide by.
We have another member of the committee, Laura Soderberg, 16 Black Horse Lane. Given the current supportive, positive environment in our school buildings, along with an encouraging messaging from building principals, that the assumption that there will be bullying on mask wearing is a large assumption. I think you need to address the issue if and when it arises.
Absolutely, absolutely. I'm certainly not assuming that will happen. I'm just, I just want to make sure that it it doesn't. And that's another thing, by the way, that when we do it. And that's another thing, by the way, that when, when we do a test, because again, I've been through sort of a trial on this, they make us say as well, two things. One is that unvaccinated individuals need to wear masks. And the second is, you need to make sure that the community knows that if they want to wear masks, they can wear masks.
Right.
And the message, the message there is, look, we're, we're not, we're, we're a culture now that is going to have to think about when we're gonna wear masks, when eventually we get to the point where we're allowed to do that in every setting. So, we can't stigmatize anyone for anything. I don't think it will, I mean, I have great faith to Ms. Soderberg's point and to the presentation today that our school communities are gonna do a great job with that. But I will address, we will address, bullying is something we'll address at any, I mean, that's something I believe in at, at any point. But if it results from this, we can address it immediately, but I, I have full faith that that won't happen. But I just, I need to make it clear because that's what I need to do as a superintendent.
Can I ask how the committee would feel about something, or do I need to just make a motion and see where it goes?
You need to make a motion and see where it goes.
I just wanted to have one comment on what Dr. Sullivan was saying. You know, it's, it's interesting because, like, if you go to Whole Foods, you don't see somebody with a mask and go, oh, they're not vaccinated. You know, you, you don't think that. You just think, oh, they, they have a mask on, you know? I think if we have that kind of, you know, just that kind of environment where, you know, you're gonna have kids that still wanna wear the mask, is that true or not? I mean, there's people in Whole Foods, fifty, sixty percent of the people are still wearing masks, including the people that work there. So I'm just like, is it gonna be like, you know, I think that, you know, we have to do some kind of an education on why somebody would still be wearing a mask. And it might be, they might be vaccinated and feel like they still wanna wear a mask. And, you know, we, we just, I think that's, that, that, to me, I'm, I'm worrisome in the school. I'm just praying that we're able to, you know, have that same type of feeling like at Whole Foods. Like, you walk in and somebody that has a mask, and it's not that kid saying, like I said, at, at the flag football, why are you wearing a mask? You know, why are you wearing a mask? That shouldn't even be a, a question that a kid would ask because they should already be informed that, that it's a personal reason. And I think that we have to say that. So I am concerned about bullying. I'm concerned about, about that. Like, and, and I, I do have confidence in our school district and leaders to be able to have that. I just wanna be able to, to know that, or to feel like it's like Whole Foods. If they wanna wear a mask, don't ask them any questions. They're just wearing a mask, right? That, that's, that's, that's what, that's where, where my, I'm a little bit nervous about that, that's all.
I, I don't wanna extend. I just need to add, like, it's okay to ask questions. Kids ask questions all the time. And then we can just talk to kids about how to answer those questions. Kids, kids say stuff all the time. Like, think about, like, my mother is blind in one eye, and people say, what's wrong with your eye? And she says, nothing's wrong with it. I'm blind in it. And the question's answered, and we move on, right? Like, you can ask the question, the question could be answered very simply, and then we move on. The bullying is if it keeps going over and over and over. A question is just a question. That's not bullying. You're allowed to ask questions.
Yeah.
That's all.
But that goes, that goes to why are you wearing a mask? Oh, you're unvaccinated. Oh, okay. You, you don't think this, in my opinion, I think there's gonna be some bullying there. Why aren't you vaccinated? This question's gonna be asked. So, I, I, like I said, I, I think if it's in, if it's, if it's, it should be a private issue. You shouldn't be able to ask people if they're vaccinated or not, or what, you know, it's, it's a personal, you know, we're taking personal responsibility. And we're, we're taking that away from our kids, I, I think, in a way. And it's just a concern. I, I, I just don't think it's anybody's business to ask somebody that's in a mask, why they're wearing the mask. I just think it shouldn't be, it shouldn't be asked, period. I wanna wear it because I got a cold today and I feel comfortable. I gotta, I gotta go around and, and, like, people in Whole Foods are gonna ask me why I'm wearing a mask. They're not going to. The kids are gonna ask kids. And that's a huge consideration. And if we're gonna do that, we need to, you know, talk to people that are gonna be able to give good responses that are not gonna, you know, I'm worried about the social, emotional of the child.
Well, I, I, I think let's, let's see if it becomes something that is something we need to address, but at this point, I mean, consider that, Mr. Kearney, in any sort of vote you make, if there is a motion that comes at some point in time during this discussion. You know, consider that. And, and well, obviously, I mean, we have wonderful leadership staff that, that monitors that situation, and I think it's a relevant concern. It's material, it's important, but right now, we're just considering the bigger picture. If there, if there is any consideration, I think Ms. Caleri might have had a motion. She had some thoughts over there. I don't know if she had a motion or not, but...
I'm just gonna make it and see where it lands.
I think that's a great idea.
Okay, all right. I would like to make a motion that we approve allowing vaccinated students and teachers to forego mask-wearing upon DESI approval and our bargaining obligations at the high school and allowing vaccinated teachers and students at the middle school to do so on the return of winter break, January first, pending that approval for the whole building and our bargaining obligations.
Okay, there has been a motion, just articulated by Ms. Caleri. Is there a second to that motion?
Can I ask a question of Dr. Sullivan?
Is this a point of inquiry?
Yes, it is. Point of inquiry. Point of inquiry, Dr. Sullivan, is there any magic to the date? The motion on the table is bifurcating the masking between high school and middle school with a delayed date of January one. Does that?
For the middle school.
For the, for the middle school. High school immediately, immediately? Was that the motion?
Whenever DESI...
As soon as we... Yes. And so, January one would be the, the middle school. Is, well, from an administration standpoint, is that, how does that land with the administration operationally?
It doesn't, so the thinking I have here is just, if, obviously, I think the root of that would be the vaccination opportunities. So, you, you need, the reason I gave January eighteenth is because I thought that
Oh, right.
That gave a full scope of weeks to get the second dose, and then it was a little bit beyond the holiday. So we could watch it to protect anybody who might be vulnerable because they don't have a vaccination, you know, just looking at everything. Operationally, I, I mean, I think of things like the term, and it doesn't really, masks don't have anything to do with that. So I can't think of any operational reason that it would be January first, you know, December fifth, or, I mean, it's, it's not an operational thing necessarily like spacing might be because of lunch and all that. So, no, it's really not an operational concern.
So does that response cause you to amend your motion in any way, Ms. Caleri? I'm just asking?
No.
Okay. So is there a second to Ms. Caleri's original motion as articulated by her?
I will second the motion.
The motion is seconded by Mr. Dial. Let's do a roll call vote. All in favor. So this motion would approve a elimination of the masking requirement in the high school immediately upon satisfaction of two conditions precedent. One is receiving formal approval from DESI. The other is fulfilling our bargaining obligations. The other part of Ms. Caleri's motion is to eliminate the masking mandate for the middle school upon the satisfaction of those same two conditions precedent as of January first, two thousand twenty-two. So in the high school, it would be immediately upon satisfaction of the conditions precedent. In the middle school, it would be as of January first and upon satisfaction of the conditions precedent.
Could I make a point before you vote?
Is that okay? Just a point of order, Dr. Sullivan?
A point of order.
Sure.
We would, if that were the scenario, we would have to create a system so that when students are of mixed schools together, that we have, like, for instance, I, there's not a lot of scenarios, but we do have a learning commons that they use. I really have to sit down with the leaders, with Principal Mills and Principal Scott and their teams, and make sure that, I mean, I think you can do it, but I just want you to know that we'd have to, because you, you have two separate rules for one building here. When they are together, what is the overarching rule there? You know, do, do we allow the middle school kids to stay masked and the high school kids to remain unmasked if they're, if they're vaccinated? Or do we have all students who are in that space wear a mask at that time? That's just a consideration. It's operational. It would, it would have to work out, but I want you to be aware of that operational need.
Outside of the learning commons, how many other spaces
Not many.
are they sharing space?
They share, Jim, but not at the same time. They don't really cross all that. They'll, they'll cross, like,
Yeah, cohabitated spaces.
Coming into lunch, you know, they'll, they'll cross, but not for a period of time that's of a concern. Not a lot, honestly, but, you know, I, I feel a little sheepish answering that until I sit down and talk with Principal Mills and Principal...
But as, as the motion on the table would be, that co-mingled or not, high school students who are vaccinated and teachers would not be required to mask. And middle school students, vaccinated or not, would be required to mask up until the two conditions precedent and January one. So cohabitated wouldn't, at least in my mind, unless I'm missing something you're saying, wouldn't cause a wrinkle because you would, high school students would still be subject to the requirements of high school students, middle school students would be subject to them, whether they're in a cohabited space or not.
No, but we could make an operational decision to have the...
Good.
So like, let's say the learning commons.
More stringent, to have the high schoolers mask when they're amidst, and when they're in the presence of...
And I'm not saying we will. I just wanna make sure you know that that is something we're gonna have to cross because of our shared building and an additional obstacle if we so vote a different standard for each group.
But, but by default, if we did nothing, then cohabitated space
Yes.
high school students could be unmasked.
If they're unvaccinated, if they're vaccinated.
If they're vaccinated, and middle school students up until January one would all be masked.
All middle schoolers that have to mask if that's, if the, if the motion carried.
Right. And that motion has been seconded, so we are gonna vote on it.
What would you say? Go ahead.
And staff.
What about staff?
Middle school staff would still have to be...
Well, you have to consider staff, and you also have to consider maybe folks coming into the buildings.
So that, that is not covered by the motion.
It's not, but I'm just...
Middle school staff, at least as I understand the motion, would be covered by the January one
Yes.
timeframe. So again, if they, just them overlapping doesn't change the requirement. Operationally, it may, you know, you may, you may determine to do something more stringent on an operational matter, but as far as committee direction and policy, it wouldn't change anything. And we haven't discussed coming into the building yet. I don't know if that's...
Yep, but it does cover staff too.
Yes.
That's important.
Okay. What, what happened to Mr. Kearney?
He just turned his video off.
He just turned his video on.
He's here.
He's here. When he turns his video on, he's back.
Okay. All right. Stay with us, Mr. Kearney, because we're about to vote.
I am.
Okay. So does everyone understand the motion? And what a motion, and what a vote in favor would entail, or would, would be in favor of? Okay.
Does Mr. Kearney, I'm sorry, does Mr. Kearney have to officially join the meeting in order to vote? I just wanna make sure he wasn't...
I'm good.
What do you mean by that?
I don't know, I just, I...
When you went him in as a panelist, that's noted, just like if you struck him in right now.
Okay, I'm just making sure. I don't want him to, I don't want Mr. Kearney to vote but not be an official member of this meeting because he just...
Official.
Okay.
Because he is here. As a, as a sitting member and a voting member, he's... Okay, all in favor, roll call. Mrs. Caleri?
Hi.
Mr. Dial?
Hi.
Mr. Kearney?
Hi.
Mrs. St. Orange?
Hi.
Hi, Craig McClellan. So that motion unanimously carries, so that is, that gives you some, some guidance as to operationally how you'll, you'll be able to deal with this once those conditions precedents are, are, are met or satisfied.
I thought a very good conversation, very thoughtful. We've got a lot on the table, so, thank you very much.
Brilliant. And did you do drama? Because that was a very pregnant pause there.
Well, you know, it wasn't something I expected, so I was, I was just, I really wasn't sure about it, but I'm good. I feel good about it. Let's move on. Dr. Sullivan, does that conclude the superintendent's report?
Oh, absolutely.
All right. Well, thank you very much for that
You sure?
that, that very involved report. Moving on to our finance reports, Mrs. Owen, or Ms. Owen, excuse me, do you, do you have a report for the committee?
I do.
All right. The monthly update, is that first?
It is the monthly update. Dr. Sullivan, can you share it? My computer died.
Mine's dead too, so I can't see questions. I'm okay. I have a little bit of a charge, so. I'm charging mine, so I can see if one pops up, but I'll have to run over there to read it.
This is the financial update for the month of October. I'm gonna be brief. I'm not gonna, you know, go, I'm gonna go over the highlights of it. With thirty-three point three-three percent through the year, and our budget is thirty-three point four-eight expended, so we're right on target with that. Our spent tuitions, which we're following, I reported it with a shortfall of approximately seventy-five thousand. Reported in August, and then a hundred and fourteen thousand shortfall in September, and now it's bumped up to two hundred and ninety-nine thousand shortfall. The increase was due to private school tuitions. We had a student who was in a day program who unfortunately moved into a residential program, which is much more costly. So we are definitely following and working closely with the Director of Special Education just to follow on what's going on with the tuitions. Again, I just gave you an overview of by school, the different budgets, what's expended, what's encumbered, and what their balances are. As you can see, in drill, schools are all under the thirty-three percent. The thirty-three percent probably is bumped up by district-wide and special education. And something new that I'm, I'm gonna start reporting is utilities, which I think is key to follow. So just a brief start for utilities. By school, I did the Osgood, the Deer Hill Middle High. I broke down the heat, what we spent to date financially, the electric and what we spent financially, and then the water and the trash for this year, and then versus last year at the same time, so you can get a comparison. Obviously, a little bit higher, or a lot higher in some areas, but last year at this time, it probably won't even session very long. Second breaker, just the historical data. I'll just keep putting that in the report, so we have a, you know, overview of what, what we're getting from year to year. You can see from twenty-one to twenty-two, there was an increase of about fifty thousand dollars, so we'll see that in FY twenty-three. Our capital outline, outlay for this year, again, where our projects are. So we've had a lot of interest in our Deer Hill and our high school air handlers. Bit opening will be on Monday. We did a walkthrough this week. The wood shop collection is just about done. We've got a couple electrical things that need to be fixed. The door fobs on the buildings will be completed during the December break. The science lab furniture is here. I think they're waiting to install during a break. Pilot program, we're still reviewing best products, and then the Chromebooks and the school budgets at least have already been completed. At some point, we do need to have a more in-depth conversation about capital. We had a capital walkthrough yesterday, went very well. Not, not really a whole lot of questions. They were, you know, they were very impressed with, you know, what we had to say. They said everything was valid. There was, you know, nothing we were requesting. The only thing that we, we talked about, probably putting to the bottom of the list or taking off is the first one, the ten thousand for the feasibility study for the cooling system for the middle and the high school, just because the interest is now to move forward with a statement of interest and get a physical study on a new building. So they felt, the, the few members that were there felt we probably shouldn't put, put the funding towards a feasibility study if we're gonna be looking at redoing the whole school. You've seen this list, the middle school, high school paging zones, the furniture replacement. They did ask if we can come up with a, a plan, you know, are we gonna do several classrooms at a time? So we're working on that, that we walked through and showed them the Cove base and the upper and lower gymnasium areas, the replacement of the Chromebooks, fifty thousand for the safety automatic window shades at Osgood in case, just for privacy reasons, you can see in. Principal Sullivan wants to continue to retile her classrooms, which she began last year. There's some ceiling tiles at Osgood that need to be replaced, just due damage. Field lights, we need to upgrade and replace. Facility's made a, a good effort by getting a lift and replacing all the burnt-out bulbs. However, it didn't change anything. So they're saying, the ballast, there's different fuses for different lights in the ballast, and it, it's not even worth going into. So the lights right now are gonna work partially like they've been working. We also need a new scoreboard at the alumni field. We also need a scoreboard at the alumni field. Um, scoreboard doesn't, it's old, it's original and it, it doesn't, um, time types of penalties for different types of sports. We talked about locker mechanisms at the middle school. Most of them are old and they don't work, so the students aren't using the lockers. And then we want, did a walkthrough and we went over to the new health clinic area, um, to see that there are no windows. There's no air conditioner or heat coming through there. So they'd like to, to install some type of air conditioning heater split in that. And then create a hallway to access the bathroom, um, into room two-twenty-three. The athletic director, um, is looking for, and I know this question came up, it's, it's not necessarily, it's not a minibus, it's a fifteen passenger van, which is why the price was thirty thousand dollars. So just for clarity, I spoke to him the last few days. And the last two projects have been on the list for several years. Capital, last night, the members that were there, you know, suggested that it, it definitely is a DPW, um, issue because we don't, we don't actually do the paving. So they, they've got it on their radar as well. So compared to last year, which was like one point eight million, this year we're looking for about a little over eight hundred thousand dollars, which is, um, a big difference from over last year. But last year, we pretty much got almost everything we asked for with a few exceptions. Grants, nothing has changed with the grants. We have no new grants.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
The scoreboard?
The scoreboard.
This is a stupid question. Is that something that like, if we were to do some construction that we could preserve and reuse, you know what I mean? Like when we build a new building, if we end up going over to the field for any reason, can that scoreboard be?
So if we get a new scoreboard, can it be relocated if it needs to be?
Like if we ended up disrupting that part of the landscape, if we ended up walking down this path to a new building, that seventy-five thousand dollars, could we just like pick it up and put it back in the new scoreboard?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Probably.
Right?
You have to be able to.
Yeah. Yes.
Okay.
Yes, the short answer is yes.
Good.
We'll put it as an advisory. Let's make sure that we could get a scoreboard that's not going to be permanently fixed to the spot. Uh, in case we have to move it for.
They're putting it, put it somewhere else.
Right.
That's correct.
I'm sure they can move it.
And the press box is like an insurance number right now, right?
The press box is being covered by insurance. The contractor's come out, um, took the measurements and it's going to stop the work. Um, we're waiting to get quotes on all the equipment that was lost.
Yeah.
Inside the press box. And a lot of the equipment that was stored there was damaged. So we're just waiting to get all the estimates from the vendors on, on the equipment that was in the press box.
Internal pictures?
We have a couple internal pictures, um, not great. It doesn't show a whole lot.
From the seventies.
Uh, we also have the quotes from the, the sound system. Person is actually the one who sent me the pictures of the inside. So he's got all his paperwork for all the equipment that he provided. So he's new equipment.
Great.
Replacement equipment.
Yeah. And Susan, can, can you mention something here about that? One of the things that when we did the walkthrough yesterday, we noticed that that, uh, building was actually built illegally. Because there's, there's, there's no, it's built on the actual sidewalk. So we have to look at, we have to kind of look at that.
So to clarify.
So if they're saying.
Sorry, keep going, Paul.
Sorry?
I was just going to add.
What's that?
I don't know. Go ahead. I'll add after.
Okay. So, um, I think that has to be a discussion on how we rebuild that because I think you were saying that it has to be rebuilt the same way it was built, which was unsafe and, um, has some ADA issues that are real concern. You can't get a wheelchair around the sidewalk. And it, if you look at it, that they put a rock wall literally on the sidewalk. So that's something that we noticed that, uh, I think we should have, it should have some concern. That's all.
Okay. To extend what Paul was saying, because when I were there, Susan, the, the retaining wall around that area did appear to narrow the sidewalk, so it's possibly not ADA compliant. I did not have a measuring tape with me, but it did appear to be less than forty-two inches. Though I don't know that the word illegal necessarily used to apply, but, but, but it is possibly narrower than it should be. And so that's a great point.
Okay. So when we rebuild it, we should just, I would, I would imagine that we, when they do have the plans to rebuild it, they would bring that in front of us and then we'd be able to ask those questions then, correct?
Sure, sure, of course. But that's, that's, that's an insurance claim, right?
It's not actually capital.
So that's, that's, so let's just stick, yes, Paul, that will be a process you'll, you'll, we'll have some input on, but, but right now we're just focusing on these, on, on the, the capital outlay.
No, but I, I get, I get that, but that was mentioned and it was mentioned to me when we did the walkthrough yesterday that we would have to build it exactly the way it was and the way it was knocked, you know, we're going to put something up that's going to knock down again. I, I just think.
Right.
I think the thing should be, and that should be a conversation that we should all have. It's, it's not going to be an easy one. And in the meantime, um, it, it, you know, we, it, it looks terrible when I drop my kids off every morning and I got to look at it and, and see that pile of rubble sitting there. So yeah, it, does it upset me? Yeah. Yeah, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna lie. You know, and we're talking about what the, the walkthrough and I just wanted to mention that. That's all.
Right.
It's definitely something to keep in mind.
Well, I'm sure it's going to have to, it's going to have to go before the building inspector and meet code. But what the insurance company is saying is they can't extend it. They can't make it bigger. There's a footing there. They have to stay with the measurements of the existing footing unless we plan on chipping in to build something bigger and greater, which.
So that's possibly a future conversation.
Yes.
That's not related to our capital project currently. Right.
Yeah, we, we got it, guys. We got to stay on point here because we're, we're trying, we're, we're, we're trending towards ten o'clock now. I just like, you know, let's, let's just stick with what we got to do here.
So again, the grants, nothing's changed with the grants. I'm just giving you, you know, the opening balances, what we have spending, what's remaining. Very similar with the revolving accounts. Um, as you can see in food service, um, she has put in for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. She's putting in, um, and getting quotes for a new serving line or an upgraded serving line for the middle school, high school. Um, we're also talking about some type of, um, computer, not computers, what?
Digital?
Digital screens in the kitchen, um, or the cafeteria, which show menus and things like that. Um, so that's include, not included in that price, but that's also on the table for discussion. And then if you can see, the athletic revolving was another one that had a balance. Athletic director has, has ordered some, um, some goals and some other equipment that he's in need of. So he's definitely, um, looking for quotes and looking to spend down some of that money back and put it back into the program. And that concludes, I know it was quick. I don't know if there's any questions. I just tried to point out that, you know, the highlighted information, we're going to watch utilities and we're going to watch the special tuitions. And everything else is, um, going along as planned. I don't have any, you know, area concerns at this point.
I'm just.
Any, any questions? Anyone? Uh, Mr. Colery?
Nope.
Mr. Dial?
Um, one quick one. In your conclusion, it says at this point in the school year, without the usual concerns for utility costs, the budget is proceeding, based on projections. Uh, does that mean it's not proceeding based on projections with the usual concerns or I guess, should that be something we are concerned about?
I mean, the, the two big concerns are usually the, the tuition and the utilities.
Yep.
So, um.
And is that just because they're unforeseen or do you, do you actually have?
They're unforeseen.
So they're, it's, it's known unknowns that you're, that you're carving out. It's not that you have specific concerns about them at this point.
I don't.
Okay. Perfect.
Just, those are just the two key areas that I, I watch closer.
Okay. Questions for me?
Name is John. Mrs. St. Orange?
My own.
Sorry, sorry, sorry. Mr. Kearney, any questions? Paul?
You're on mute.
Sorry about that. And I, I, I don't want to hop on this. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Can anybody hear me? Okay, um, the, the, the other thing was is we, when we did the, the walkthrough yesterday, uh, we noticed that in the, the, uh, bathrooms, the, they're not touchless. They're, um, the sinks, it's, it's almost impossible to wash your hands, put soap on and dry at the same time. Is there any way we can replace those sinks out with touchless? You know, I recommend that we, you know, maybe invite like syntastin to, 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 to basically go over that because it's, it's definitely a hygiene concern. Kids aren't even able to, the, the hot water really doesn't come on. It's, it's kind of a disaster, to be honest with you.
Well, we looked at that, um, Paul, back when we were, um, when we really thought that, you know, fomites were a major cause of COVID. We didn't know. And we did at the time, now some of them may have slipped, you obviously saw it, but we adjusted those press faucets so that they ran continuously for, I think it was thirty seconds. Now, you clearly saw differently and I confessionally haven't checked that in a long time. But we did look at, um, we had our facilities look at getting sort of motion sensors. And I can't remember at this time what it was. I think it was a, it just was a major investment. No, you know what it was?
It was.
They were backed up.
Backed up over a year.
They were backed up over a year with it because remember this was the beginning of COVID, Paul, when we were all, no one wanted to touch anything. I mean, the threat that is still, I don't think. But I think you, to your point, I think it is a good time to look at it again because I, I would imagine that we're not as backed up as we were when we last looked at it.
And, and Mr. Kearney, this is something we might take up in our capital subcommittee, um, and, and work that through that angle.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
That was the reason.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Mr. Kearney, have you asked everything you want to ask?
No, but, um, that's fine.
No, I mean, if you have more questions.
Yeah, I mean, we talked about furniture, um, you know, what, uh, uh, are we not going to get furniture this year on capital because of, uh, I, I, I don't know, I kind of misunderstood that. Uh, are we not going to, because we're looking at long-term feasible study before we do that? Or are we still on track to, uh, do a pilot program for each classroom?
Well, we are, we are doing the, um, work around that. We didn't feel we'd be at a stage because it's technology and furniture. We didn't feel we'd be at the stage that we could order it on this capital. So it actually would be the next year, um, that we'd be looking at it because we just, first of all, we can't even use the furniture.
Right.
Necessarily.
Okay.
So it's, it, it's just a timing thing. I did ask that Lisa Radn is doing all that work. She didn't feel that this would be the capital cycle to ask. It would be the next capital cycle.
Right. Because we'll still be trying it out.
So that's for the pilot program, but with, there is still an item on capital for furniture. The principal Sullivan's looking to.
Oh, that's true.
Come up with, you know, how many classrooms at a time she wants, they want to get on a cycle. Um, that's what.
Right.
Capital asked them. So she's got, I talked to her today. She's going to, um, figure out how many, you know, teacher desks she's going to do each year, how many classrooms she's going to do each year. Um, but she's in desperate need of some of, some of that furniture.
Okay. And there's, there's one other thing that I want to talk about and that's signage. Is there any possible way, uh, that we can get a sign out front and some signage inside the school? You know, they had basketball sign up the other day and no one really knows what's going on. And, uh, we did get to experience that over at the middle school and how John Mills has been able to use his to do updates and every, you know, and all that. And I know we're doing it in the, in the, um, middle, at, at the cafeteria. I just don't know if we need to go to capital because, you know, it could be under ten thousand dollars where we could buy maybe eight to ten screens and put them around the school to try to get the messaging out because the kids aren't really getting messaging. As well as I, I, I think we could provide for a very short dollar amount. And then maybe we can use, uh, ask for a sign out front, um, that it, you know, you could put school committee meeting tonight. Girls' sock softball, uh, to the girls', um, soccer and the championship. I think we need to do some kind of signage out front and in the buildings themselves. Every school in the, in the district around, around here has it and we don't. We're still using, you know, when you go in the front door, the, the high school, imagine a nice fifty-two inch TV telling you welcome and some information there. And it's a good way to get the messaging out. I think we could do it without, with under ten thousand dollars. So how would we do that? Would that be something we can work in the, in the facilities committee to try to find the money to do that? And do you guys agree with me that the signage is pretty weak?
Osgood, just, um, to your point, Paul, uh, Osgood did just get a giant, um, screen that's in their lobby. More for presentation purposes, but it can certainly be used for that. Deer Hill has one. You, you, you know, the middle school has one. Obviously that works well. I could definitely see a place, just low hanging fruit, for one in the lobby of the gymnasium downstairs and one upstairs near, right outside the gymnasium. Those would make perfect sense to have. You know, and then, you know, in terms of outside signage, you know, the only thing I, I, I just want to put out there in consideration is, you know, and I know you just want to make sure it fits, it fits the, you know, I mean, a big neon sign, you just have to be tasteful and done well. And also in mind with what we, what we, what we currently have, I, I just wouldn't want to put a sign that was so outrageously out of place.
Right.
But I do agree that I think it just would have to be done well.
Absolutely. And, and the, the last thing I got, I, I, is, is the lighting. It's so dark, uh, around there. And you know, there's, there's.
Outside lighting, exterior lighting?
Exterior lighting.
Yes.
And one of the things that we can do is as simple as a twenty-dollar item that we could, especially the stairs that go down to the, um, to the student parking lot. I mean, it's really dark there and it, you know, it's as simple and, and I don't mind donating them if it's okay. And we could put them so that when you do walk on the sensor, it, they're solar sensitive, so you wouldn't have to run any wires or anything, but as soon as somebody walked by, the, the stairwell would light up. Um, and I think it's, I think we need light, there's a, it's, it's really dark.
I agree with you. I think that's a, that would be the facilities committee.
Yep.
Yeah.
To really look at that. Paul, I, I, I can see exactly what you're talking about.
Okay. All right. I'm sorry, guys. I, I could go on and on, but I'm, I'm going to let it go because I'm going to have Lydia and I had a great walkthrough and I'd like to hear what she saw yesterday as well. So.
Mr. Kearney, maybe what we can do is, is have our facility subcommittee address some of those issues and get that on our, our agenda. We're due for another, another meeting and catch up on that as well.
That'd be, it'd be great to see you, Lance. That'd be great.
Thank you, Mr. Kearney.
I have two questions. One, so when you said we need to speak a little more specifically, I remember last year we had a separate meeting to talk about capital budget and finalize that. Do we need to do it as a separate meeting or can we include it in a regular meeting?
That's completely up to school committee.
Okay.
There's, there's not, there's not a lot on the list.
Right.
And it's not a lot of controversial, I don't think there's anything controversial on there. It's pretty black and white.
It seemed pretty well received by capital budget.
And capital, that's why I think capital had said, you know, we don't really need to go to the other schools to see.
Right.
What tiles. We know what they look, we know what they look like.
Self-explanatory. I just didn't know if we needed to officially set up, not that we need to do that at this moment, but if we need to finalize.
We could put it on, you know, as an agenda item.
A regular meeting.
At a regular meeting if, if that's, you know, what you, what you prefer. We should probably say as a, you know, facilities subcommittee as well to go over it.
The only other question I have, and, and I, I guess the cove base was like, they understood that that was worn out and old. I guess in my mind, as a sequencing issue, I don't, I guess I don't understand spending the money on the cove base before tile is replaced. Because if we're going to replace the tile in a few years, then does the cove base have to be removed and then put back?
I don't, I, I honestly don't know the answer.
You're saying like flooring and baseboard? I don't know. And you know what? If they're going to approve it, great. It just doesn't make sense to me from a sequencing perspective. And if it's a fifteen thousand dollar sequencing question, it just seems like a big deal. So it's just something I want to further discuss at a different point and not at nine-ten tonight. I just want to say it out loud right now. That's all.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions for Ms. Owen? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Owen, for the, uh, for that monthly update. Uh, there's a second item on the, uh, finance section of the agenda is that your, your finance report is Owen?
Yes. So we, we just, I know we briefly, um, reviewed the budget calendar and the budget priorities. I just need, um, just need a final approval of, of both of them.
Okay. So we had, um, these have been presented previously and we'd review them. So this is more of like a final read. I don't know if anyone's seen any problems or have any questions. You can just jump in and ask questions if you, if you have any. Otherwise. Otherwise, we can have a motion to approve as well.
Have these changed at all since the last presentation to the school committee?
No.
I move to approve, Bo.
Motion's been made to approve the budget priorities and calendar as presented tonight by Ms. Owen and as previously presented by Ms. Owen. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Motion's been seconded, all in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion against carries. Priorities and calendar approved, Ms. Owen, thank you.
Thank you.
Owen, does that conclude your financial report?
Yes, it does.
Thank you very much, Ms. Owen. Moving on to school committee comments and communication, again, let's, streamlining is the name of the game. I have no, I have no school facilities committee update, I know we have policy recommendations, there's policy, excuse me, policy revision recommendations for the school facilities subcommittee, so Mrs. Colery, Ms. Zainan, do you wanna take the lead and sort of go through these?
Sure, so our committee, our subcommittee, sorry, has been meeting on these bases for some time now. And we have managed to put together this binder for your review. So policy JH, student absences and excuses includes a section about student absence notification program and dropout prevention. Student activity accounts, policy JJF includes an update to the title of the person in the front office. And a procedure for post-graduation financial arrangements for these accounts. Student records, policy JRA, just includes some slight editorial edits. And then we recommend deleting file, it's policy JRA-R because it is linked as a reference. Where is it? Is it in here? Where is it?
JRA-R?
Yeah.
The last one? It's in there.
In the footer of JRA.
Legal reference in the last page of our packet, 505.
Yeah, but it's not in JRA, so that I had to add it. I don't know, somehow it got deleted. Right? JRA-R, student records, hold on.
It's right there.
We're moving.
It's right there?
Yes, thank you. Appreciate it.
Yeah, it's correct.
Okay, great. Okay, so questions, comments, feedback? Go for it.
So this is the, the records, that's just, it's non-substantive change.
Correct.
Good housekeeping.
Yep.
Great. Student absences, this seems to have some operational stuff, has, I guess Dr. Sullivan looked at these and comply?
Yeah, you know, it's the law, the law changed, we have to have this in there.
Yeah, as long as, as long as, as long as administration thinks they can comply with policy, I'm all set.
Then it's, you're saying it's, it's.
The law changed a couple of years.
It's, it's, it's law.
It's the law, so we have this in there. So this is just now, and then we'll operationalize it.
Okay.
It's a little tricky during COVID.
The three days or, you know, versus some other amount of days, this is, this is legally prescribed?
It's chapter 76.
Okay.
Whatever it is.
All right, well, that, that certainly helps.
We have to, yeah.
Mr. Dial, is it?
I'm totally done.
Mr. Kearney, do you have any questions regarding the policy, recommended policy revisions?
No, and thank you for doing all this, this is great, thank you.
All right, Mrs. Zainan doesn't have any questions because she participated in the process. Knowing that those two additions are, I did not know that before, that they're, they're actually totally prescribed, I don't have any questions or suggested revisions. So are there motions on the floor, is there a motion on the floor to approve these recommended revisions?
Move to approve the recommended revisions.
Been a motion to approve by Mr. Dials, our second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Colery, all in favor? Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion against carries, revisions are approved. And if those, thank you to Mrs. Colery and Ms. Zainan and Dr. Scollins.
Cameron McCollum, are we allowed to let Ms. Owen leave in the middle? We don't have too much time left since she was leaving.
Yes, I thought Ms. Owen was leaving. She can certainly, if it's okay with Dr. Sullivan, Dr. Scollins.
I was, I was just waiting to see if there's any questions on the student activity policy.
Oh, okay.
You're so thorough. Not trying to kick you out, but it's pretty late.
It's fine with us, I just, but, but, I mean, it's up to Dr. Scollins and Dr. Sullivan. All right, moving on, so we're, we're into the, the reports in the subcommittees, so if anyone has any, any, any reports they feel compelled to give right now, please, please do so.
I have a lot of reports.
Great, Mrs. Colery, please give them. Okay, great, Mr. Dial?
30 minute presentation, if you don't mind. No, I'm, no, no, no reports for mine.
Okay, I know Mrs. Zainan does, we'll go to her last. Mr. Kearney, do you have any reports from any committees, subcommittees?
No, I just wanna thank the schools for letting the basketball, and it's going well. Kids are happy, I'm real excited to, and the kids excited, so just wanted to give a thank you for, for all that was participating in that.
Mr. Kearney, how about a quick shout out about the wellness committee and the student survey?
Oh, yes, yes. Well, I'll let you do that. I'll let you elaborate a little bit. We had, we had a wonderful meeting, absolutely, and I can't tell how excited I am to, to work with you on that.
It is exciting. So we had, for the first time ever, we've had students and families on our wellness committee, so that was really exciting, and they came. And one of our goals is to evaluate the desire for after-school snacks and providing those for students. So we came up with a survey, and the middle school and high school are filling the survey out this week based on, and well, they'll let us know if, in fact, do they, are they interested in purchasing snacks after school, and if so, what would they like? So we will have the results on Friday, and then we're gonna meet in December to look at the data and see what we're gonna do about it. So yeah, it was exciting.
That's great.
Yep, that's it, for the wellness committee, it's good.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Kearney and Dr. Scollins. Mrs. Zainan?
Very briefly, the alternative energy committee has a lot of potential things that could benefit the schools, some of which we have spoken about in the past. I will be attending the AC meeting tomorrow, and also the chairperson, Tanya Baudel, will be joining us at our December 1st meeting to give us a more in-depth update, you know, straight from the source, though it's not my interpreted version, which will be very helpful to hear kind of the different initiatives and grants and possibilities that we could benefit from.
Okay, thank you, yes. That committee will be presenting in a school committee meeting.
Yeah, December 1st.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Zainan. Moving on, approval of minutes, we don't have any minutes to approve this time around, so move on from that to topics not recently anticipated. I wasn't confronted with any unless I missed something? No, so we'll move on to an executive session. There is a reason to briefly move into executive session. So I will say this, we are gonna reconvene to adjourn an open session, but if you're watching at home, nothing substantive is gonna happen after we come back in, so you've seen the entirety, basically, of the substance of the meeting. So, you know, feel free to, to log off, you're not gonna miss anything. We have to go into executive session briefly, and then we'll just come back on only to adjourn the meeting, so.
We actually don't have to come back on to Zoom.